I'd like to call this meeting to order. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word "English" for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Trustee Gonzalez Hoyer.
To get the translation of the agenda, click in the upper part of the webpage using the English page. Click on the globe icon in the lower part of the page and the translation function will activate after the following sentence.
Trustee Reckler will now lead us in the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chechenyo, Wickma, Karken, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. Also items that are not on the agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the school district. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Dr. Hurst, can we have the roll call?
Yes. President Phillips here. Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, everyone present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoyer.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Everyone is present in the counter four.
Thank you, sir. We will now go on to item A6, which is disclosure of items to be discussed in closed session. We have two items this evening. One is anticipated litigation and one is labor negotiations. Is there any public comment on these two items?
No public comment at the time.
Seeing none. The board will recess into closed session and be back out for open session at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. We are now reconvening open session. I would like to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Board of Education to discuss and vote on a possible vaccine mandate. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible-thinking contributing members of our global society. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word "English" for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect. Provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Order of business may be changed without notice. The public is invited to attend and participate in all WCCUSD Board of Education meetings. Dr. Hurst, is there a report out of closed session?
No, sir, there is not.
We are now about to begin public comment. Please remember that public comment is for items that are on the agenda and items that are not on the agenda as long as they are within the jurisdiction of the school district. If you would like to speak for public comment, please make sure that you get one of these orange cards and turn them in before public comment begins. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please raise your hand now. I see 20, 31 hands, 33. Raise your hand now. Once public comment begins, we won't be accepting new hands. So I'm going to give you a second to raise them if you want. All right, going once. Going twice. Now, if you're on Zoom, you're supposed to have a first name and last name, so please make sure you put your first and last name. Going two and a half times. Gone. Fifty-four people. The last one is A3T, A32P Candelaria. Please, Ms. Candelaria or Mr. Candelaria, try to put your first name on there so we can see it. All right, so the first speaker, we're starting with folks who are in the building. The first person is Martinez Sergio. Please come to the microphone. No? Okay. Sheila Swift.
Swift, and I came to this meeting to to ask you to please postpone your decision on mandating vaccines for the students. I think that there's many reasons why we should do this. We should wait to find out more information about the vaccine and the effects. There are no long-term studies of the vaccine on young people, and I'm very concerned about the long-term reproductive harm to our children. Another reason why I think we should postpone it is what we know about natural immunity. I don't know what your policy is or will be about natural immunity for all the people who've already had COVID and have natural immunity. And why would they need to be vaccinated with an emergency use authorization experimental drug if they already had the disease and recovered? Another reason I think you should postpone the decision is because the risk to our children is greater from the vaccine than it is from the actual virus. My son is a, he's a student athlete, and he's so healthy, and he is not a person who's at risk. There's also many other people who have there's many other people, I think, who we should consider before mandating. It's also been very, very quick to make this decision. Hardly anyone knew this meeting was going to take place. You see, there's nobody here to give you feedback. So that's all I would need to say right now. I didn't have time to prepare. I just want to reiterate that you would please postpone your decision till you have more information about the long-term effects of the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let the folks know. Just want to let the folks know in the room that there are actually 326 people attendees watching on Zoom. The next person is George Cole.
I think I would like to ask you to postpone any decision regarding COVID and COVID mandates for the students in the school district. My son is a baseball player for El Cerrito High School due to his age, 15, and his extreme level of fitness. And the fact that he's already had COVID, I feel that he should not have to have a vaccination. He's a very healthy person. We don't have any ideas about the long-term effects of this. I wish that there were more people here in the building. I know it was just announced yesterday, and I know there's people watching on Zoom, but I feel that there's a lot of people that do not want this to take place, and they are very serious about this. And I've never been to a school board meeting, never been to anything like this. It's very odd getting into the building. Thanks to Mr. Booker over there, I was allowed to get in. I didn't have, I don't have a QR code yet, although I've been vaccinated. I had my card, a digital picture of it. I wasn't supposed to be let in, but I was finally let in. This is weird times here, and again, I'd like to say, please, take your time in considering this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carla Dean.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking me, giving me a chance to speak. I also have two children, one at Penole Valley High School and one at Terra Hills, a 10-year-old and a junior. My son is a three-sport athlete, very healthy, not even a cold in the last two years. Same with my daughter. I am here to advocate for them. I don't think there's enough proof, there's enough proof that this vaccine is going to benefit them. It's going to hurt them more than that. I think that you guys need to back off and let us make the decision on whether we want to vaccinate our children or not. It is not a core vaccine. It's more of a gene therapy. And I have a person who was lost to COVID, fully vaccinated, very recently. And this is why I think that our young children are still in the development stage. And we need to do a little more research before we push that on them. That's one, that's one of my points. The second point is, what is your plan if we decide to pull our students out of school? Your virtual Zoom is currently to max capacity. Are we going to deny our children education? As far as I'm concerned, this is a free, free education. It should be available to all children. I am okay with testing my child weekly, and this should be an option for our children. It should not be a, this is a mandate, a recommendation. It is not a law. It is not a core vaccine. My child can still get COVID and still give COVID. I don't see the point in all of that. I have a fully vaccinated person. My husband isn't, and I never intended to vaccinate my children at a young age. We've had 10,000 kids tested with this vaccine, for this vaccine. To me, that is not enough. Not enough data behind that, and I am not willing to put my children or my athletes, students at risk of an enlarged heart or a brain or anything that can happen. So I would appreciate it if you guys postpone this and give our children a chance and don't take something from them, because my son is very concerned that he's not going to be able to play sports. And that is something that I hope you guys don't take away from our children. Thank you very much.
That concludes the speakers in the room. We are now going to go to the speakers in the Zoom.
Our first public speaker is Kelly McLaurin. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I know with this vaccine mandate that you guys are trying to push on these kids. A lot of kids will be dropping out of our school, and our funds are already depleted as it is for our district. I don't believe this mandatory vaccine is the right move at this time, being that it only helps the kids that are over 12. And I think you guys should really reconsider this drastic decision, because I'm sure there will be many lawsuits that follow if you guys try to push this mandate. Also, you have to give these kids another option for schooling if you're not going to let them go to real school. Our virtual academy is already full, and I don't know what you expect these kids to do if you're not going to let them go to school in person. That's all. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Allison Palma. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Yes, I am in complete agreement with the other speakers that have spoken already. I have two boys at Valley View Elementary School. One of them is going to be turning 12 next month. I sent this link to Dr. Hurst with no response. The CDC is correlating the vaccine and young males under 18 years of age to myocarditis and pericarditis. It has not been tested enough. It has not. My boys are healthy. They play four sports outside of the school district. They're athletic. They are not sick, and I'm totally okay. If you guys want to test them every week, I'm okay with that, but you will not force me to put this vaccine in my children. It is not, it's not safe, in my opinion. I'm not, I'm not willing to risk their health for anybody. This meeting, I would have been there in person, but I got an email last night saying you had to be vaccinated or have a 72-hour test. There was not enough time to get that test. So I feel like this was done intentionally to keep people away from the meeting that had difference of opinions than the people on the school board. There should have been given a week's notice so that people could actually show up in person. I would have been there. I emailed the superintendent on this. Again, no response. I feel like you guys are doing this on purpose to keep us away from there so that you can make your vote and not, you know, not feel bad about this, but this is not safe. This is not something, and my kids will be gone. My kids will be out of the school district, and that's sad, because I graduated from the school district several decades ago. My kids have been here. We love it, and it's sad that I would have to pull my son out of a sixth-grade year because you guys want to insist I inject something into him that's not been proven. Thank you.
Excuse me. I know earlier I said to change your name, so there's a first and last name, but apparently you have to log out and log back in. So just say your name, but don't log out and log back in. Stay in the queue where you are. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Allison Looney Williams. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I currently have two children in the school district, one at Penole Valley High. She's a senior, and one at Penole Middle, which is eighth grade. I am totally against vaccinating my children. If you guys need to mandate this, what are you going to do for virtual schooling for these children? There has to be an option. What happened to no kid left behind? You guys are leaving half of these children behind, and it's just unfair to these children, and we need to come up with something as parents, with you guys, something, we need to do something for the children. My kids are healthy. We've all had COVID in our house. If we need a test weekly for them to attend, yes, but if you mandate, I will be pulling two 4.0 students out of your school district and putting them into another school district. So I really hope that we can come to a resolution on this matter and, you know, come as a whole, as a, you know, as a group, and just really figure out what we're going to do for these kids. Just remember, we always were talking about no kid left behind, and you're going to be leaving behind 50% of these children because we choose not to vaccinate our children. That's all.
Next public speaker is Marissa Glidden. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Glidden. I'm a third-grade teacher on full-time release to serve as president of United Teachers of Richmond. The United Teachers of Richmond Executive Board and Representative Council have voted overwhelmingly to support a vaccine mandate for all eligible students and staff. 95% of UTR educators are already vaccinated, and over 90% support a vaccine mandate. As educators, we care deeply about keeping our students healthy and safe and are particularly committed to protecting our most vulnerable students. Vaccines are a critical component to protecting everyone in our community and one of our best layers of defense against COVID in our schools. In addition to supporting a vaccine mandate, the United Teachers of Richmond are also committed to partnering with the district, the county, and our community organizations to make vaccines accessible to all by hosting and supporting vaccine clinics at all of our school sites. We're also committed to providing information to families and staff who may have questions about the vaccine. Let's all work together to keep our students and staff safe and keep our schools open. Now is the time to be courageous to protect our community and to keep our schools open. I encourage you to follow the advice of our county health officials and follow in the footsteps of Los Angeles, Culver City, Oakland, Piedmont, and more by passing a vaccine mandate in our district. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is C. Peters. Please state your first name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Carol Peters. I would just like to say, as a district teacher, I would like to express my opposition of the vaccine mandate for students and staff. I think it's fishy that the public was notified last minute about this meeting, but I, I am in agreeance with what the parents have already said. I believe parents should choose what's best for their kids with this newly FDA-approved vaccination. I also do not believe employment should be based on your health status. Further, I am concerned the district will not continue COVID protocols once these mandates are approved. The district's own dashboard doesn't suggest that this mandate is necessary for middle-to-high school students, so I question the need for it. Also, with staff and 95% of teachers have been vaccinated, I'm not understanding why there's a push for the final 5%. This seems more as an interest to cut costs as opposed to really protect staff and families. We had many, many study sessions about opening schools and going back in person, but we have yet to have a study session about the effects of COVID and the COVID vaccination on students over a significant amount of time. With there have been many communities that have been open all of 2020, we, there should be some data to see what the spread is like since our dashboard doesn't suggest that we're having a huge problem that would suggest a mandate. We just need a real plan. We can't say that in-person or online learning didn't work, distance learning didn't work, we need to open up schools, distant learning didn't work, and then create, then say students should go to the virtual school if they do not want to get vaccinated. Distance learning, virtual schooling is not for everyone, and that should not be the only option. And then lastly, I want to just express my disappointment and discuss to how last week's meeting was ran, clearly diverged from the opening statement from tonight. I'm not surprised that certain board members didn't say anything or choose to stand for any side that's on brand with who they are, but I'm highly disappointed that the superintendent didn't say anything on behalf of the students. So we got to do better. If you can't do better, just resign. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Joanna Han. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, board members. My name's Joanna Han. I'm a board-certified family nurse practitioner with 10-plus. I'm a board certified family nurse practitioner with 10 plus years in pharmaceutical research. I am here tonight as a mother and a healthcare provider to oppose the COVID-19 mandate proposal that the school district is looking to enforce on children's ages 12 and older. To date, the state of California has not mandated vaccinating children 12 and up. So why are we jumping to the gun? There have been no long-term safety data on the COVID vaccine. Federal regulators are actually going back to the vaccine makers to try and get them to enroll more children. The vaccine has only been approved for emergency use authorization for children's ages 12 to 15 since May 10th of 2021, which is approximately five months. The entire process of developing a drug from preclinical research to marketing, which is a total of six phases, can take approximately 12 to 18 years to make it to market. For a study to be effective, it needs to be 10% of that specific population. Roughly 25 million children in America that are ages 12 to 15. And 10% of that is 2.5 million. So when Pfizer conducted the study on children's ages 12 to 15, they only enrolled 2,260 adolescents and Moderna had roughly enrolled 3,000. And half of those children got saline. For the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, they actually are still conducting the study of the initial participants that got the initial shot. It is a 24-month study after the second dose, according to page 18 of the clinical protocol. I'm not sure if everybody has read the 146-page Pfizer protocol or the 158-page Moderna protocol, which I did. It's pretty much the cookbook of how the study is conducted from start to finish. And there are a lot of SAEs known as adverse events, statistical adverse events. I hope that everyone who is voting is non-biased, is reading non-biased statistical peer-reviewed journal articles and not getting their info from other media sources or Facebook. Bottom line is we want all what is best for our children. And the best and the right thing is to let the parents and their personal pediatricians decide what is best for their child.
Our next public speaker is Maya Bazjanak. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Maya Bazjanak. I just, I am commenting in favor of a vaccine requirement for staff and for students over 12 and for volunteers on campus. I just have to address some of the false information that was stated earlier in comments. Over 5 billion doses of these vaccines have been administered. As of May 13th, 2021, more than 2 million children under the age of 18 have been administered vaccinations for COVID. Myocarditis is significantly higher as a result of getting COVID in children than it is from the vaccine itself. Hundreds of children have died from COVID and many more are suffering from long-term consequences. And there has not been a single case of a child dying from the COVID vaccination. So I just need to point out those things. For those of you who are opposed to the vaccine, it's really important that you get the information right and that it not be, that this not be a forum for misinformation being disseminated in our community. I do understand the resistance to having requirements imposed upon people. However, it's really important that people understand that vaccination program only works if enough people get vaccinated. And we can see what's happening in our country right now, that areas that have a lower vaccination rate are having significant issues. And I would hate to see outbreaks in our schools continue to close classrooms. That has an impact on all of us and all of our children and on those of us who are health compromised. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Hope. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself. We will be moving to our next public speaker, Joseph Glazer. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, Joseph Glazer, five years in WCCUSD, seventh grade history teacher at Hercules Middle School. I am strongly in favor, possibly more in favor than any other resolution ever brought in front of this board for these two vaccine mandate resolutions tonight. Please do not give in to anti-vaccine misinformation, which is not at all science-based. The letter released from the county health officer says it all. We already mandate vaccines for measles, polio, and many more. If this is the kind of stuff that was listened to during the polio outbreaks, we'd still have kids in wheelchairs from polio. Enough. Save children's lives. Let's get this done. Postponing these resolutions equals giving in to anti-science misinformation. Trust the science. Listen to the public health experts, not the minority from anti-vaccine pressure groups. Listen to Dr. Lianna Wen and Farnatano, who are strongly in favor. Listen to Dr. Fauci and President Biden, who support vaccine mandates to end this pandemic. These vaccine mandates are what will keep myself and my students safe. We have had hundreds of cases in this district and it's only a matter of time until one of them ends up in the ICU. Enough. Listen to the people on the ground. Around 90% of teachers in the district support these vaccine mandates. Nobody has the right to endanger others. This is a global pandemic health emergency. Your personal freedom ends when it affects mine. We will not have in-person education last the rest of this year without a vaccine mandate for students and staff. If that's something you care about, then you should vote for these resolutions. I'll also add that I think the student mandate should be amended to automatically be updated for new eligible ages as ages 5 to 11 will be coming up soon. Also, there's no legal requirement to have a religious exemption of which there is none for other school required vaccines. And so I believe it should be eliminated for this one as well. Only a limited medical exemption should be allowed, which is what the county health officer has recommended. And those with limited health exemption should be able to go to the independent study or virtual school. Please pass this. You'll save lives. Be a hero. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Kevin. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Yes, well, my comments will be brief. I very much support the vaccine mandate and think we should implement it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Katie Brohan. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Brohan. I'm a parent in the district and a member of WCC Safe Open Schools. I hope the board will vote tonight to add the COVID-19 vaccine to the already existing long list of vaccinations that are required to attend public school in California, such as polio, diphtheria, tetanus, pertussis, measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, and the chickenpox vaccine. The board has a duty to keep all of its students, faculty, staff, and families safe. This is the clearest way to achieve this goal. The CDC recommends everyone 12 years and older should get this vaccine. That said, I do hope that until there is full FDA approval for students under age 16, the district will provide a distance learning option for those who opt not to receive it. And while some might complain that the virtual option is not as good as in-person, and I don't disagree, at this time, learning in person while concurrently putting your fellow peers at risk is most certainly a worse option. I do not believe that individuals who are eligible to receive the vaccine yet still choose not to do so should be allowed on school campuses. Those individuals must acknowledge that in doing so, they're greatly benefiting from those around them who are heeding what science says is the best way to end this pandemic. I highly doubt the parents who are speaking tonight against the vaccine would agree to send their child to an in-person school for only non-vaccinated children. Nor do I think any teacher in this district would ever agree to teach at that school. Individuals who choose to follow the science should be afforded the opportunity to learn in an environment that keeps them as safe as possible. For them, that's in-person, surrounded by their vaccinated peers and teachers. Conversely, the safest learning environment right now for an unvaccinated child is virtual. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Ernesto Falcon. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I'm Ernesto Falcon. I'm a parent of a first grader at Madera. I'm completely on board with a vaccine mandate. And the, you know, because I think at the end of the day, we all hope that everyone would do the right thing and vaccinate themselves when they're eligible to bring the pandemic to an end. That hasn't happened. And I think it's, it's, you know, we're, we're well past the point of waiting. And so I think it's really time to just take concrete steps to get us to the end of the pandemic. And on that note, you know, the thing that I really wish to inject in this conversation and I implore the board and the superintendent and everyone in charge of making these decisions to really pair and make clear to parents the benefits of being fully vaccinated as a campus. We haven't crossed that threshold anywhere in this country yet, but it's, it's obvious what that means. It means we don't have to close classes anymore. We don't have to have constant testing. We don't have to, you know, pretty much the only thing the state actually requires now is indoor masking. So we don't have to do outdoor masking if all the kids and teachers are vaccinated on campus. So we really need clarity and leadership to pair the benefit at the end, the light at the end of the tunnel, the benefit that comes with this. Because if it's just vaccinate your kids and then we'll, we'll continue a, a defensive scared position of, of constant mitigation, I think that's where you're going to get a lot of resistance and it's unfortunate because it's unnecessary. Once we're at the end, once everyone's vaccinated, we're all safe and the pandemic's over for our community. It may not be over for other parts of the country, but we can rest assured that our kids will be safe, adults are safe, and we can return to our normal life. And, and so I'm fully supportive. I just want some real concrete steps of how we bring, how we transition back to a normal life as part of this effort. So I hope, I hope that becomes part of the conversation soon. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maria Shanley. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Maria Shanley and I'm the mom of three kids in the district. I am speaking strongly in support of the proposed vaccine mandates. I encourage the board to follow the recommendation of the Contra Costa County Health Official and vote in favor of the mandates today. Vaccine mandates are longstanding public health measure. My kids have already had to provide proof of vaccination for nearly a dozen diseases in order to attend our public schools. And that was during normal times, not during the deadliest global pandemic of our lifetimes. There's already a huge amount of data that demonstrates that the COVID vaccines are safe and effective for people aged 12 and older. According to the CDC, as of July 16th, close to nine million teens have received the Pfizer vaccine. And there were only around 9,200 reported side effects. That's one in every 1,000 teens who got the vaccine reported a side effect. Out of those side effects, over 90% were extremely minor, such as soreness near the vaccination site. I see no reason that this vaccine should be treated any differently than the other vaccines that have long been mandated. Increased vaccination rates in our schools would protect the health of the students in the district. There's other scientific studies that are coming out of multiple countries that show that around one in 10 kids who are diagnosed with COVID end up with having long haul COVID symptoms that can linger for weeks or months and possibly longer. Increased vaccination rates would also benefit the health of others in the broader community. For example, grandparents with compromised immune systems or siblings who are not yet eligible for the vaccine. And increased vaccination rates would also improve the quality of education for students in the district because it would reduce the need for students to take time away from the classroom due to potential COVID exposures. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the vaccine mandates.
Our next public speaker is Stella Miranda. Please unmute yourself. Stella Miranda?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Stella Miranda. We have three schoolchildren in your schools, at three different schools. I am strongly opposed to the vaccine mandate. And the reason being is because under the FDA, this vaccine is not considered a regular vaccine like smallpox and polio. The fact about it is that it's a cellular and gene therapy. And I think that you guys are going to have a major problem. It's going to have to be brought up with the APIC because it's not like a regular mandated vaccine. It requires that, that protections be put into place in order to make it a vaccine. Secondly, there are cases of myocarditis in boys especially. And I believe that if you look under the FDA 2020 D131, it specifically tells you that this vaccine is basically not fully approved yet, even though everybody is saying that it's been approved. It's still under emergency approval, number one. Number two, it's put into the category of cellular and gene therapy, which does not fall the same as a vaccine of smallpox or polio. I just think that you guys need to oppose it.
Our next public speaker is Kate. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Kate Burkert. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. I feel strongly that it's certainly in everybody's benefit to have a mandate for vaccination for the protection of the students and the staff district-wide. And that will certainly be reflected in how the community is affected as well. So please vote for a mandate in all three situations. Thank you. Good night.
Our next public speaker is Stephanie Garcia Avila. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, board. My name is Stephanie Garcia Avila and I served as a student trustee in 2020, 2021. When I was a student trustee, I suggested the board to include land acknowledgements before every meeting. While working on it, I intended for land acknowledgements to be said by student trustees. Student voice is incredibly essential and I hope moving forward, we let our student trustees say the land acknowledgement rather than adults. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Our next public speaker will be the last four digits of a phone number 3168. Please state your first and last name. You may unmute yourself. Last four digits of a phone number 3168.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Kai Miola Fiola. And I have a son that goes to Stewart Elementary. Hello? Um, so I just, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Continue.
Okay, okay, okay. So I just wanted to call in and, and just voice my opinion on opposing this vaccine. Under the Emergency Use Act, it requires that intervention address a serious or life-threatening condition. And up until today, in the state of California, at 6 o'clock tonight, 69,248 people have died since the start of this pandemic last year. There have been a total of 4,736 cases up until now. So if we do the math, that's a 0.014% death rate. And this is for all individuals, kids, adults, all individuals. The CDC has also acknowledged that children under 18 face a 0% risk of mortality from COVID-19 statistically. There's also the law USP 360 BBB3 that states that all people can refuse experimental treatment. And that was affirmed by the CDC last year. And this is considered an experimental treatment. Just like the nurse practitioner said when she just came on, how these vaccine trials, they take multiple, multiple years. And this has not been approved regardless. And this has not been approved regardless of what has, what a lot of public opinion is that it has been approved, but it has not. The earliest approval that's coming is late 2020 or early 2023. Also, federal law HHS Title 45, CFR Part 46 prohibits the mandating of any experimental vaccines. And that's what this is. My husband and I are prepared to pull our child out of your school district and do homeschooling, do something else if you guys decide to mandate this, where statistically, children have a 0% death rate.
Please include your comment.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Safa Shakari. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Safa Shakari. I have a second grader at LFOR Elementary. In addition to having a spouse who teaches at Pinole Valley High School. I'm strongly in favor of a vaccine mandate. And unfortunately, I'll need to spend my time debunking some of the misinformation that I've heard tonight. There are several vaccines available. And the ones, they have been approved officially by the FDA. They are no longer under emergency authorization. Been officially approved, which is why we're here at a school board meeting talking about this at all. Additionally, this, the vaccines that use the mRNA messenger strands are not gene therapies. Here are not gene therapies. The way they work is they use the messenger RNA strand to introduce information into your cells that teaches them how to make the outside coding of the virus that then moves to the surface of the cell. And your immune system then learns to recognize it and fight it. Then the mRNA strands disintegrate, as do all mRNA strands. It is completely harmless and miraculous invention. Additionally, I'd just like to point out, we send our kids to school to disseminate knowledge, to have them learn. And yet here we have a vast majority of very learned scientists all around the world encouraging us to follow the science and use this invention, vaccine. And so many people who ironically send their children to school to learn refuse to listen to learning. Please approve this mandate. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is TP. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself. TP, please state your first and last name. You may unmute yourself. We will move to our next public speaker. Sarah Shakari. You may unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Sarah Shakari. I teach at Pinole Valley High School. First of all, I hope that we do decide to mandate the vaccines for our students. We know from doctors and scientists and numerous studies that the vaccines are safe and they work. Mandatory school vaccinations are part of the reason we've been able to eradicate polio and nearly eradicate measles. We follow the science and at this point, people who do not follow the science will not. As a community resource, we must protect our most vulnerable. I also want to express my concern that on the last, during the last school board meeting, I was disappointed by trustee Phillips' insistence on silencing trustee Smith Folds and our student trustee Justin Truio. I commend the other board members for offering Smith Folds their questions. I would prefer to see the process play out rather than have arbitrary question limits imposed on the entire group without a vote. As a teacher and a parent in the district, I personally felt embarrassed that student trustee Truio, as a student, was subjected to this unfairness. Thank you for the time to speak.
Our next public speaker is Rachel Archibald. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Rachel Archibald. I am the parent of a fourth grader in the district. Thank you to the board for bringing this important issue to the community. I support COVID vaccine mandates for staff, vendors, and students, anyone who is on campus in person and who is eligible medically. This pandemic is shaping our children's lives, as is our response to it. And we need to model responsible behavior for them. The vaccine is safe, effective, and in wide use. There is a vaccine mandate in place now for previously existing vaccines, but no one thinks about it. All students currently in school have always been required to be fully vaccinated. And there's no reason that the COVID vaccine shouldn't be included in the existing mandate. Vaccine mandates will communicate the community's commitment to truth, science, and the importance of protecting the broader community as a whole. Several speakers at the start of this public comment have commented that they have healthy children. This isn't an individual decision. A universal mandate is intended to protect the community as a whole, including the most vulnerable students, teachers, and staff. This isn't an issue that can wait. This pandemic has gone on long enough. We need to take every action to end this pandemic. We have a safe and effective tool and it would be irresponsible not to use it. Thank you so much for supporting these critically important vaccine mandates.
Our next public speaker is Michael Hernandez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I have three students who come to the school, your school district, in Pinole High, Middle, and Terra Hills. I understand you are under extreme pressures, pressures by parents of vaccinated children, the teachers themselves, and the teachers' union. I'm asking that you not to make this decision tonight. I ask that you consider the following factors. One, the children who do not want the vaccination. No one is thinking of their rights, freedom of my body, of my choice. While people opt the vaccine, their choice is a choice. No one should have to be bullied or pushed into taking a vaccine. That's limited data of short, long, short or long-term effects. I think before we rush and mandate COVID vaccine, the district has a responsibility to all the students, vaccinated or not vaccinated. What is the WCCUSD plan for students and parents that refuse to get the vaccine? Will children be expelled or removed from campus or arrested? Fourth, I want to know what you want to create a mandate for vaccination that is considered by the FDA as a cellular gene therapy, not similar to smallpox, polio, or other childhood vaccines. I would appreciate answers to my question before the vote on this mandate. Further, the CDPH only has mandated childrens to wear a face mask current on their website, noting noted in regards at the state level of mandate of COVID vaccine. Addition, Israel, 95% of severe patients are vaccinated. Furthermore, 85 to 90% of the hospitalization are fully vaccinated people. Another report, September 28th, 80% of COVID deaths are among the vaccinated in UK hospitals. COVID deaths across UK are now 3,000% more frequent than they were at the same time of year when the population was unvaccinated. There is no vaccine that will stop the infection that will still get you sick regardless of vaccine or not. Thank you for your time.
Our next public speaker is Lana Boyovich. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Lana Boyovich. I'm one of the nine district registered nurses and I am also the coordinator for immunizations for all 28,000 of our students. I have worked as a credentialed school nurse for nine years and I'm also a certified public health nurse. As a fellow health professional, I just want to echo the concerns that the family health nurse practitioner already voiced earlier. When reviewing a COVID vaccine mandate for students, I asked the board to please consider the staffing logistics for acquiring something like this when we are already currently facing an enormous staffing shortage. This includes within our small nursing department. Unless you are a school nurse, a health aide, or a school office secretary, you likely have no idea what the process is for maintaining any health mandates. Vaccination, record collection, review, maintenance, and follow-up takes a huge amount of manpower, literally tens of thousands of hours for a district this large. And I believe this has not been considered by any of the proponents of this new proposed mandate. Simply put, the staffing required for taking on a project like this currently does not exist. And even if they do create new positions, I fear it will likely only add to the growing list of staff vacancies within our district. I hope the board will also consider how many students will likely be excluded from school if they are not compliant with new COVID vaccine mandate. Our district already has over 200 who are currently being excluded from school for vaccine non-compliance. And that's just for the core standard state mandated vaccines, not a new controversial vaccine. This issue disproportionately affects students of color. Another mandated vaccination will further exacerbate disinequity. To put it into perspective, the Hercules School family currently has six students who are being excluded. Compare that to the Kennedy School family that has 61 students who are currently being excluded for the standard California mandated vaccines. Currency rates are already at an unacceptable level. Please do not add one more obstacle for our students to access an in-person education. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Partnership for Children and Youth. Please state your first and last name. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Jennifer Peck and I am a parent of a high school student. And I'm calling in to strongly support the mandate of a vaccine for all who are eligible students and staff. Our whole family and my daughter got vaccinated the moment that we were eligible to for two reasons. One was to protect ourselves and the other was to protect the people around us. Our public schools have a duty to protect the public health. And that is the reason why we are having this conversation. It is really frustrating to listen to the misinformation about the safety and efficacy of the vaccines that prevent COVID. They have been proven, the data is clear. And that is the reason why we're having this conversation right now. I have been exceptionally proud that this school board and our superintendent are willing to bring this forward for this discussion. I see us as a pioneer in this. There's few other school districts that have done this so far, but I think it's going to quickly happen because there's such a long history in our country of mandating vaccines in the interest of public health. It is what we need to do and we need to do it right away. I want to just also remind us that kids are losing school time because of quarantine rules related to COVID and scares around COVID. I want to remind us of the significant mental health crisis that kids being out of school caused for kids of all ages, especially our teens. We all painfully remember the stories of that. The longer that we wait to mandate the vaccines, the more we're going to have kids actually out of school and suffering the consequences of that, which is unacceptable. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Nick Eko. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Akle and I'm the parent of a kinder gardener at Aloney Elementary. I am speaking to strongly oppose vaccinating staff and especially students. I would pull my daughter from the district if this is mandated. I would also caution that the district, there would be multiple lawsuits filed if they should implement this. The vaccines have zero long-term studies as to their safety, especially for children whose bodies and brains are still developing. I would like to remind parents who support these mandates, the manufacturers refuse to accept any liability for side effects or long-term medical issues. What we know so far is the COVID vaccines are failing. Just look at Israel. Praise for the highest vaccination rates per population size. And as of August 20th, 7,500 cases, one in 150 people has COVID. 775 daily new cases, 120 people are put into the hospital each week. Singapore is praised for also their high vaccination rates. But as of July 23rd, 1,100 cases in 28 days, 90% of the new COVID cases are fully vaccinated. Massachusetts, as of August 2nd, 75% of the COVID patients are vaccinated. I prefer that if the staff and students knew they were sick, not had their symptoms masked by the vaccine. These vaccines do not prevent you from getting or spreading COVID. You are not protecting others by getting it, quite the opposite. My own daughter and I were infected by a fully vaccinated person, an RN nurse who was forced to get it for work. This RN had no symptoms and had no idea they were sick. This is incredibly dangerous. Asymptomatic super-spreading will likely become a standard, as it has in Israel, Singapore, and Massachusetts, if these vaccines are mandated. I prefer that a COVID carrier knows they're sick and stay home, not come into the classroom and infect countless others. Thank you, guys. That's it. Oppose.
Our next public speaker is Nicole. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Nicole Reader. I have two students in the district. I'm an RN with Kaiser Permanente for 16 years. I've been working with COVID patients in the hospital since day one. I just wanted to, I went on the CDC website as of September 29th, so yesterday. 478 deaths of children aged zero to 17 years. I'm against the vaccine. Sorry, I should have stated that in the beginning. I'm strongly opposed to student mandates. 478 deaths total in the US of zero to 17-year-olds. I don't want to minimize any of those deaths that they are, each one is precious. But we have 73 million children in this country. If you do the math, that comes to 0.0000, there's five zeros there, 655. That's the rate of death of children from COVID-19 in this country. I presumably, those children who did die, unfortunately, most likely had one of the comorbidities that I see in the hospital, usually hypertension, obesity, asthma, diabetes. Those are the main ones. I, I was, I'm upset that I was only given one day notice of this meeting because I'm actually in another state right now, because I will pull my children if this passes. So I'm exploring living in a state that does not have vaccine mandates. I'm curious about, it sounds like Oakland Unified, they're still working out their plan, but they have already stated they will make personal belief exemption available. So I'm wondering what West Contra Costa will do. I think that's it. I know I have a couple of seconds. Oh, EUA, 12 to 15-year-olds. It is not FDA-approved, it's still under emergency use. I'm not sure how West Contra Costa can mandate vaccinations for that group when it's still under EUA. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Tom Krabs. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, to start, I wanted to say that both my wife and I are vaccinated. We are old. Forcing this vaccine based on new and lightly tested tech, which does not entirely, as other people have said, or even mostly prevents the spread of the disease and has a quickly declining efficacy over time, is reprehensible. I'd like to address previous debunking. People keep bringing up polio. This is an absurd comparison. Polio is a disease which primarily affects affected children in a devastating way for which we have a vaccine that provides sterilizing immunity. This vaccine does not primarily infect children. In fact, they are of no more danger than they have, as other people have brought up, than they are from seasonal flu, unlike adults. The, it doesn't provide sterilizing immunity and it doesn't primarily affect them. So this idea that this is somehow, you can equate this to, well, polio vaccine is absurd. We have, we don't have long-term studies of this or any other mRNA vaccine, not just this one. So to be clear, this is a new tech. Yes, the side effects seem very low right now. There have been side effects and quite frankly, more people get side effects, more children get side effects than have problems from COVID. But for adults and everyone else, if you're at risk, you should get it. Ma, then mandating it for everybody is probably a bad idea. Mandating it for children is, as I said, reprehensible. This is motivated This is motivated by fear, not science. You can talk, you can listen to the people who are talking, the people who reference studies, and SAEs are the people who understand the science, and they are rightfully against this thing. Finally, whatever your opinion of the efficacy and safety of this vaccine is, forcing people who may not have other educational options, I do, and I'll be leaving if this passes, it's fundamentally wrong. This is motivated by fear. It's adults forcing medication on other people's children in a desperate attempt to lessen their own sense of fear, and it's wrong. That's all.
Our next public speaker is Andrea Elia. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say that I do oppose the mandate that you are putting on our kids. I do believe that the vaccine hasn't had enough testing yet to even see what the side effects would be, and they haven't even tested that many kids in order to figure this out. You can still pass COVID being vaccinated as well, so I don't see how this is the solution. But I am opposed to it. I think it is too early to bring to our kids. And I do think that not knowing the side effects of it is kind of scary to put in our children in further of their growth as an adult. So I definitely oppose this, and I think it is way too early. And I think you should take a step back and maybe think this whole thing through. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Hector. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself. Hector. We will move to our next public speaker. Maisha Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on my cellphone. So good evening. Maisha Gash, Kennedy High School. I want to say I am vaccinated. I don't have a dog in this fight either way on what decision that the board makes, but I will say this, my life matters. I love my students like they're my own. About 10 days ago, we buried a friend who died from COVID. She was in the hospital for six weeks, the last three on a ventilator. It was hard, and it's still a little hard. A good friend of mine, before he could get vaccinated, before he was eligible, he died, three weeks in the hospital, the last week on a ventilator. It was hard. My cousin in Ohio, her, her husband, two of her three children got COVID, and they're all vaccinated. And she said she's just so thankful that they had all been vaccinated because of the symptoms that they had. She could not imagine what it would have been like. One of the callers talked about polio. Well, my dad had polio as a kid. He's in his 70s. My grandmother talked about how she would have to rub him down with ointment, day and night. And my dad had to wear braces, but by the grace of God, and whatever was going on then, he went on to play college sports. He had a 30-year career as a firefighter. Maybe I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for whatever treatments were going on then for polio. My mother has that mark on her arm from getting the polio vaccination at that time. So like I said, I don't necessarily have a dog in this fight, but my life matters. And then something else. Can we just be careful of our tone? And I know people have their passions, but as a teacher who listens to school board meetings and my colleagues, how do you want us to present ourselves before your children tomorrow when we hear the things that we hear and how they're heard? Because we love your children. Everybody have a good night.
Our next public speaker is Otis. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself. We will move to our next public speaker. David Tegel. Please unmute yourself. David Tegel. Yes.
Yeah, I'm strongly opposed to this vaccine. There hasn't been enough tests done to these students or to kids. And also, this meeting is super unfair. We got an email yesterday saying that there will be an emergency meeting today. And you need 72 hours of negative test to get into there. And that's not enough time for, you know, people to get tested and then be able to go to this meeting. So this meeting is going to be obviously one-sided of people that are for this mandate. So you guys are putting our kids at risk too for all the side effects that's taking place with this vaccine. There's not enough studies done. There hasn't been enough kids tested, and there hasn't been enough time. How are you guys going to feel if a big outbreak comes from this vaccine? Like massive side effects? You're not going to feel too good about yourselves. Imagine your children suffering because they got this vaccine that was forced on them. And if it's such a, if it's such a big mandate, why is the federal government not mandated to get it? It's their choice. That's it.
Our next public speaker is Kim Chamberlain. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, President of SSA Local 21 IAPTE. I am employee district. I'm asking and begging this Board of Trustees. As the district moves forward with the many new policies that ensure the safety and health of our students, staff, and community, I urge the Board of Trustees to put forth a remote work policy. For our employees, this policy would mean not having to whether to take care of loved ones at home that they cannot find assistance for during these COVID times. It is not a policy that would be in effect forever, but it would be one that would help take care of perhaps our work shortage that we have. We have very few workers out there. We're seeing it every day in our school sites with employing safety measures and hoping that we have enough people on staff to take that phone call from a parent if we wanted to register them in school or if there's a sick child, a staff member. But you guys pass this policy on mandating for the COVID or not. I still, please, consider a remote work policy for our employees. Many of them would continue to work rather than have to choose to take care of their family members at home. Elderly, children, those that just can't get wise because they can't get the vaccine. Please consider a remote work policy for our employees so we can continue to serve and educate our students. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Santiago Ramirez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a father of a little girl. I'm opposed to the vaccine. You know, we're Hispanic family, and we really don't trust the government. And we don't trust just because you tell us to go ahead and put something in your body. And, you know, I see people getting sick with the vaccine. I'm vaccinated myself, but I'm not going to force that on my daughter. You know, I was forced to because of work, but we're not going to force that on my kid. And if you do that, we're going to pull them out. And I hate to do that because I want them to have the interaction that we all did. So, I mean, it's going to basically create segregation of people that are against this. And, you know, you've been a minority, and you already don't have that trust, and you're forcing us to do it in order for us to survive or be part of society. That's unacceptable. And I'm asking you not to approve this, to get more study on this. I mean, you never buy the first model of anything. Why would you throw this to your kids? This culture of just take a pill, a diet pill, you'll be okay. It needs to change. You know, are we going to force people to lose 20 pounds too? Because that's a very, that's a huge factor for, you know, for getting COVID. And we're not forcing that. We're not forcing people to eat healthy. We're not forcing, nobody is doing anything like that. It's here, take this pill, you'll be fine. And everybody go back to work. It doesn't work that way. So I'm opposed to this. And I know a lot of my family, we were opposed to this. My father took the vaccine, within a week, he was dead. I mean, what else do you want? You know, he died of cardiac arrest, apparently. So to me, I would rather just wait before we push this on the kid. And this was FDA emergency approved. It was not approved. So we need to stop this narrative. Polio is not the same type of disease. Polio is only a human disease. COVID can transfer to animals and then go back to humans. So that's it. I'm opposed to it.
Our next public speaker is Ordónez M. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Jennifer Hernandez. I oppose the mandate for children. The reason for that, because there is zero long-term study. So therefore, there is no science backing long-term side effects. So let's trust the science, because as of now, there is no science showing the long-term effect, because there aren't. It won't be done until 2027. Also, the vaccine does not stop the spread nor protect the individual 100%, nor is the vaccine 100% safe. For anyone to say that it is safe is a liar, because there is risk involved in every vaccine. And also, what about natural immunity? There are kids that do catch COVID and they recover from it. How long is the vaccine protection last? From what I'm reading, it lasts up to six months. There's no study on natural immunity, which can last 30, 20 years. So I oppose the mandate for children. Thank you. That's all.
Our next public speaker is Toria Ward. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. I have three questions and one statement. My body, my choice is a statement. And the question is, who or what entity will be held accountable for any child harm in West Contra Costa Unified School District by this vax? I need to know anyone on this board, are you willing to stand up and take responsibility for one child that is harmed in this school district? And besides the vax, to attend school, what are other, what is our other choices as far as schooling for our children? Because most of us, and I agree, I'm opposed to the vaccine. So I agree with most of the parents here. So those are my questions.
Our last public speaker of tonight will be 8:32 de Candelaria. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself. 8:32 de Candelaria. Candelaria Machí? Yes, we can hear you. I don't have anything to say. You may continue with your comment. And? Okay, thank you. This concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you very much to everyone who called in to voice their perspective on this issue. Thank you as well to the people who came here this evening to voice their perspective as well. Board, we've been listening to public comment for a while. I'd like us to take a 10-minute recess. Can I have a motion to do that, please?
I'll motion to recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you, Trustee Recklers. There's a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to take a recess for 10 minutes. Mr. Gonzales Hoy, you're starting tonight, correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so you want to start the vote?
Sure, Gonzales Hoy, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes. Sorry, can you guys hear me? Am I muted? Can you hear me? You can? No, some of you can, some of you can't. Okay, now you can. Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Trujillo, I think you're there.
Trujillo, yes.
Okay, and Cola stepped away. Phillips, yes. The motion carries. We're going to come back at 8:02. Thank you so much. We're calling the meeting back to order after a brief recess. Now, we are going to go to item B4, which is agenda review and adoption. Board, can I please have a motion to adopt this agenda?
I move to approve the agenda, President Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Can I please have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was properly moved by Gonzales Hoy, and it was seconded by Christian on the vote.
Gonzales Hoy, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Co, yes.
Christian, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. The agenda is adopted. We're now going to move to item C1, resolution requiring employee volunteer and board member vaccination. Dr. Hurst. We're asking if the presentation could be pulled up, please. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. If you can go to the next slide, please. And to the public, we wanted to share some information with you about while we're moving forward, coming to the board, with really three proposals, three recommendations for a vaccine mandate. We understand this is certainly a tough decision, but for the district, we're making this proposal on behalf of the safety and health of our students and all of our staff. We wanted to provide a context for everyone, and not that we have forgotten, but just to make sure we had this information ever before us that we are in a national pandemic. It did begin March 4th, and it was announced by the Governor of California, the World Health Organization on March 11th, President of the United States on March 13th, and our own Contra Costa Health Agency on March 16th, all of 2020. But we also know that all of those same organizations still have shared that we're still in a state of emergency with the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide. We also want to share what we believe our responsibility is as district. And I've heard it said a few times in the public comment that we certainly believe that we have a duty to provide a safe and healthy educational environment for all of our students, all of our staff, all of our employees. We also want to recognize and share with the board We also want to recognize and share with the board and the public that we have a number of students that we want to provide a safe and healthy environment for over 26,000 students. Also understand that we have 56 schools. We have more than 3,300 employees. And we also have eight affiliated charter schools within our jurisdiction and also adult education program as well. And we take that responsibility seriously in providing for a safe and healthy educational environment. And really that's the crux of why we're presenting this to the Board of Trustees. We do believe that this is a safety issue and a health issue. We also wanted to bring before the board that we also believe the district that we have the responsibility to provide responsibility to take appropriate and responsible actions to protect all of our students. And again, the health and safety of all of our students and staff within our facilities. We also believe that it's within the district's authority and our trustees' authority to do everything that we can moving forward to ensure we provide a safe and healthy environment, especially if it doesn't conflict with state laws or federal laws. And what we do know is that in this instance, what we're proposing does not conflict either way with state laws. Next slide. We also wanted to share that we have been very diligent in providing a safe environment and a healthy environment as well. And you've heard, um, our staff come forward and talk about the mitigation strategies that we have in place from the testing, from indoor and outdoor masking, from our ventilation systems, screening protocols, our cleaning protocols. But you've also heard, um, us say, and also Dr. Farnatano say that the most effective mitigation strategy to prevent the spread of COVID-19 is vaccination for all staff and eligible students. He said that and we have shared that as well. So we wanted to keep that before the board. Next slide. We also wanted to share with the board that we also are using vaccination clinics as a mitigation strategy. We worked hard to partner with the county, make sure that we have mobile vaccination clinics. And we make, made sure that we have these at all of our middle schools and all of our high schools. Some have been scheduled. And then you could see, uh, most of them still are being scheduled, but the plan is that all of our middle schools and high schools are acting as vaccination clinics for our students and our staff and our community. And we do see this as part of our mitigation strategy to help reduce the spread of COVID. Next slide. I think one of the most important pieces we wanted to bring for the board is that we have regularly been following the guidance of our local Contra Costa County Health Service. And I wanted to share with you that, uh, we do have Dr. Farnatano here, uh, today, and he did release some guidance, uh, to local Contra Costa school districts. And again, we've been in the habit of following guidance. I've said that since I've been here that we're going to follow the guidance presented to us. And we do see this as guidance. And in his letter today, um, it was key that he shared that as a Contra Costa County Health Officer, he is recommending that all eligible students aged 12 and older get vaccinated against COVID-19 at this latest opportunity. Again, we take that, uh, statement seriously. Uh, we've been following, uh, the recommendations of our local Contra Costa Health Services. And that's what we're presenting to the board as well. Also in his letter, uh, he shared that we recommend that districts and schools continue to take steps to increase the vaccination rate of their student body. He also talks about regular communication to students and parents. He also talks about opportunities to have vaccination clinics, which we're doing. But one of the things that really stood out in the letter is he said, another step that we should take is requiring COVID-19 vaccinations for all students aged 12 and older. And again, that was his recommendation. Uh, another recommendation that we took seriously from, um, Contra Costa Health Services was the statement in his letter, he says, California state law does not recognize religious or personal beliefs, exemptions for student exempt, uh, immunizations, and only accepts valid medical exemptions certified by California licensed physicians. He shared also in the letter that he will recommend that for local school districts who are considering a vaccination requirement for students, they institute a similar strict, more health protective policy and only allow medical exemptions for students. So in considering it, the letter that he shared today, the guidance that he shared today and his recommendations, that's what we're bringing forward to the board today for consideration. So all of the recommendations he shared, you'll see in our proposals at the very end. With that, if you can go to the next slide. So we wanted to share some operational components that we've thought through, um, that we're bringing before the board as well. Uh, these are draft, in draft forms. We're still doing some thinking around these things, but we wanted to hear you to hear our thinking right now. Next slide. Marcy.
Uh, good evening. So employee vaccination verification process. We've actually already started this process and doing the survey to our employees and collecting documents. So as of today, we've already collected 1,581 proof of vaccination through our informed K-12 online process. We would continue to collect the proof from an all employees electronically, which would be preferred, but also receive it in paper as well by the due date. We would provide process for medical accommodations and the religious exemption requests. New hires will be required to provide proof of being fully vaccinated as a condition of employment in the onboarding process. And then employees that do not comply by the January third, 2022 deadline will receive notice that they will be excluded from campus and the work site and will be on unpaid leave for that time. So that is, again, we've already started that process and we will continue to do that over the next, um, two months. Next slide, please. Similar, the vendor contractor vaccination process would be the similar that we would provide. We would, um, ask that they provide and submit proof to their actual, the vendor, and the vendor would uh, notify us that that all have been fully, um, vaccinated by the due date. We would add the requirement to all contracts that the new contractors would need to be fully vaccinated in order to work on any site that provided direct services to students or would be in direct contact with staff and students. And again, the vendors would be required to submit documentation by the deadline. Next slide, please. And then volunteers, similar to the employees, they, any current volunteer will be required to submit documentation that they are fully vaccinated by the due date. We would do that with an electronic form as well. New volunteers would need to submit documentation that they are fully vaccinated as a condition of being a volunteer in their pro, onboarding process. And then any volunteers that did not comply by the due date will receive a notice that they will be no longer able to volunteer at the school sites until they comply with the mandate. Next slide.
Next slide. I'm going to talk about independent study. Um, students who are eligible for the vaccine and not vaccinated by established deadlines will be required to participate in independent study programs. Again, there are two types of independent study options, which are short-term, which would be for a maximum of 15 days, um, which students could then stay enrolled at their school site. And then our long-term option, which would, uh, mean students would need to apply to independent study, Vista Independent Study or Vista Virtual Academy would be the two options for long-term. Next slide. Um, I also wanted to list that parents, you know, if deciding not to get the vaccine, there are other options such as homeschooling and also private tutoring, um, which is education code 48200, 48224. Um, and so I listed some of the requirements here, which include students having to be taught by a credential teacher. Um, and tutoring must be provided at least three hours per day between eight and four PM, um, for at least 175 days per calendar year and in the English language. If it is a private school, um, it would, there would have to be an affidavit that is signed as well. Next slide. Students, um, and individuals with exceptional needs shall not participate in independent study unless the pupil's individualized education plan specifically provides for the, that participation code, which is education code five one seven four five point five C. And West Contra Costa Unified ensures that its policies and practices are compliant with the law. For students with medical or other qualified and approved exemptions, the school site may request a meeting to develop a plan to include strategies and supports to mitigate the risk to the student, peers, and staff. Next slide. For verification of students', um, vaccination, parents will be able to use, um, Power School Parent Portal. They will upload proof of vaccination or doctor note for, or doctor's note for a medical exemption. Support will also be provided to families. In order to execute this, there will be a how-to video in English and in Spanish. There will be a one-pager in English and in Spanish. And site, site staff will have access to direct, directly enter into Power School as needed. Next slide.
Next slide, please. So Board of Trustees, this really brings us to, uh, the recommendations that we're bringing to the board. And again, it, it's based on, uh, as I shared at the very beginning, that we are in a national pandemic and we believe our duty as, uh, as a district is to provide a safe environment and a healthy environment for all of our employees, our volunteers, our, our students, um, especially. So we are bringing forth, uh, three, uh, recommendations for you. And again, it is based on also guidance that we've received from Contra Costa Health Services and also recommendations as well. So the first recommendation we're asking, uh, the Board of Trustees consider is employee slash volunteer mandate. There are timelines that are set forth. There's timelines for submitting a proof of vaccination for the first shot in a single series. Also, there's another guideline in December the seventh to submit the final proof of COVID-19 vaccination. Then there's a gap that allows us to do follow-through and send letters with the implementation date for January the third for all of employees. Next slide. The second recommendation we're asking the board to consider is a recommendation for vendors and consultants, those who have direct contact with our students and those who have direct contact with our employees as well. And again, um, looking at this recommendation, we're asking the board to consider adopting this policy and that the deadline for proof of vaccination for these personnel, subcontractors and contractors and consultants would be December the first. Then the next slide. The final recommendation that's coming before the board is the student vaccine mandate. And we have discussed this. The mandate we're asking the board to consider would approve the resolution that's in the board packet. Essentially, it's for all of our students, 12 years of age and older. We have broken it down by those who are participating in extracurricular activities for the close contact. So those would have a first vaccine dosage 30 days after the board approves or adopts the resolution for the first dosage and 60 calendar days from, that would be the second dosage. And then that would be followed up with, uh, students or other students who are 12 years of age and older. And then also all other students must receive their first vaccine dosage, no later than 30 calendar days after their 12th birthday. So that's their first dosage and then 60 calendar days for their second dosage. And again, the implementation, uh, timeline for this one as well is January the third. So those are three recommendations that we're bringing to the board for consideration for approval. Thank you.
So Board, it is question time. Um, we're going to do rounds. So what I'm asking Board members to do, that includes the student trustees, is four questions at a time and then it'll come back to you. Okay? I want to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to get their questions asked, but it will come back to you. So, um, let's, uh, get started. Mr. Gonzales Hoy.
Thank you, President Phillips. And thank you, uh, Dr. Hurst and staff for your presentation. Um, my first question is for you, Dr. Hurst. Um, will we stop other COVID protocols if we were to pass these resolutions?
Specifically, can you speak with specific protocol you're speaking to, sir?
Uh, we had a couple of speakers that, uh, uh, in, in public comment that said that we were passing this mandate to stop other protocols. And I just wanted to clarify if we are going to stop other protocols, if we were to stop, if we were to pass these resolutions.
Let Mr. Booker answer that question, please.
Yes, good evening. Uh, we will continue to, to have our mitigation strategy in place, even though, uh, it passed, uh, there will be a mandate. Um, but those, uh, middle mitigation strategies, uh, will be reduced, uh, in some capacity as we, uh, if approved, uh, vaccinate more people.
Okay, thank you. Uh, President Phillips, are we allowed to ask questions of Dr. Farnatano? I see him on the panel.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, any questions that you have on the presentation, you could ask him. And Dr. Farnatano is here, so you could ask questions of him as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Farnatano. Thank you for being here. Uh, my first question is, uh, in your official opinion, what are the strongest mitigation strategies we can do as a school district to continue, to stop the spread of COVID-19?
Well, first and foremost, it's, it's vaccinating staff and eligible students. Vaccination is the most effective. We know that from our experience i- in the pandemic before vaccination. Um, we had testing available last fall and last, uh, winter. Uh, we had masks available last fall, last winter. We had, um, you know, spacing and, uh, keep your distance and social distancing. And yet we had uh, very high rates. Uh, and now we see with the vaccination, um, we have brought the rates down and most of the people winding up in the hospital with severe illness are the unvaccinated. Um, so far and away, um, vaccination is our most powerful tool.
Thank you, sir. My next question is for you as well, Dr. Farnatano. Uh, in your, in your official opinion, is the vax, is vaccine against COVID-19 dangerous for students and/or staff?
The vaccine, uh, is, is very safe. Um, I, I will talk for a moment about, um, the, the safety of the vaccines. I have teenage nephews, um, that are teenage boys and I have re- recommended strongly that they be, be vaccinated and they have taken the vaccine and I'm so glad that they, they have. And I, I strongly recommend this for, for any, uh, teenage boy or girl, 12 or older. You know, these vaccines, you know, have been very extensively studied. And And not only in the clinical trials where there were thousands of teenagers aged twelve to fifteen and tens of thousands of, of older teens and adults studied with several months of safety data submitted to the FDA. But since their approval, their, their emergency use authorization and then the final approval for age sixteen and older. There have been real-world experience with hundreds of millions of US residents and millions of children in that twelve-to-fifteen-year-old age group. Since May, when that age group was authorized. And, and so we've learned a lot about the safety and, you know, the, several speakers talked about the, the risk of myocarditis. Which, you know, is, is scary because anytime we talk about the heart, it's scary. But the thing about the myocarditis is that it's a very rare side effect. And it is estimated to be in young males of teenagers and men in their twenties, which is where it's the most common. It's still only about one in sixteen thousand cases and it's much less common in, in girls. And it is, almost all the cases are mild or self-resolving with no long-term side effects. And the, the chance of developing heart problems from an actual COVID infection is much, much higher. About twenty to thirty percent of patients hospitalized with COVID infection develop heart problems. And even in, in teenage boys or young men with COVID infection, the risk of them getting in the hospital is still between one and a hundred and one and two hundred. And a quarter of those teenage boys and young men wind up in the ICU. And one out of a hundred and fifty young adults who go into the hospital don't come out of it alive. So one in a hundred and fifty hospitalized young adults die. And the, the sad thing is, is almost all those deaths are preventable with vaccination. Let me put it another way. For every million boys and young men aged twelve to twenty-nine who are vaccinated, we expect about forty cases of this myocarditis. Again, most mild go away in days or weeks. But in those million boys and young men, it's estimated over four months will have prevented eleven thousand COVID cases, five hundred and sixty hospitalizations, a hundred and thirty-eight ICU admissions, and six deaths due to COVID-19. And that's just in the first four months. And then every four months after that, another same number is prevented. And so if you look at the school district, the size of West Contra Costa County with about twenty-six thousand students, if you estimate, there's about three thousand students per grade. Age, you know, twelve to sixteen or twelve to seventeen in, in those six older grades, that's about eighteen thousand students. It's estimated that less than one case of myocarditis would occur if all the students who are eligible got vaccinated. But we would have prevented two hundred COVID cases among those students. We would have prevented ten hospitalizations, two or three ICU admissions, and possibly one death due to COVID-19 in just the four months after vaccination. And those benefits continue to accrue over time. So, so the vaccines, no, no vaccine is perfect, no vaccine is a hundred percent effective. No vaccine is a hundred percent without side effects, but the serious side effects are extremely rare and much less dangerous than COVID itself.
Thank you so much, Dr. Farina Tano. My last question of this round is for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, what type of education would we do with our students, families, and staff if we were to pass these resolutions tonight?
We will work with our Director of Communications, Ryan Phillips. And we would do a full-court press with all of our students, with our families as well, and also with our staff. So we would have our Director of Communications come out with a communication plan that would actually support our students and our staff moving forward and educating them.
Thank you, sir. President Phillips, that was my last question.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris, I'm sorry, Mrs. Reckler.
Yes, thank you. This round of questions will be for Dr. Farina Tano. Thank you for being here. My first question is, and I don't mean it to be politicized or controversial, it's really just a question to ask is that we've had a number of health professionals that called in tonight. They're either nurses or they work in emergency rooms and they have questions and are posed usually around long-term studies, longitudinal research, and some of the side effects that you've talked about. What are your thoughts on that? And I, I don't, in no way do I need to pit people against each other, but what would you think is going on? Or anything you can share?
I, I can't speak to, to the individuals who, who spoke directly, but I can tell you that the vast majority of doctors and nurses across this country really strongly support these vaccines. There have, there was a letter put out by the Alameda Contra Costa Medical Association about a week ago, signed by several hundred physicians, all of whom were vaccinated and urging all, all of their patients to get vaccinated. I go and talk to the doctors and nurses who work in the intensive care unit at Contra Costa Regional Medical Center in Martinez. I, I talk to them regularly and they tell me that they, you know, are, are, are just at their wits' end when they see patients who are unvaccinated showing up, having to put them on a ventilator and, 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 you know, these young, you know, people in their forties, fifties, the parents of young children or parents of teenagers who are in death's door fighting for their life. When it all could have been prevented from a vaccine, so they're all strong, strong believers in, in everyone getting these vaccines. Not, you know, there, there's always exceptions to prove the rule, but the vast majority of health professionals stand strongly behind the safety and effectiveness of these vaccines.
Thank you. Can you talk about long-term studies of vaccines and why they're, they're why that's important and why there's this perception that this is skipping a long chain of perhaps research and studies?
Sure, um, you know, the, the first studies, the first trials of these vaccines, the first large-scale trials were really started in the, the summer of two thousand and twenty. So we now really have, you know, well over a year of, of experience with these, with these vaccines. And what, what we have seen as, as almost every single vaccine that's ever been studied is if there are gonna be side effects, they're gonna be right away. We know that a lot of the mild side effects happen within days. And even some of these rare severe side effects happen within a, a week or two. As time has gone on, we are not seeing any signal and, you know, the FDA is continuing to, you know, follow these and monitor these. And we're not seeing any signal of anything showing up long-term, nor would we expect it to. The vaccine is out, out of your body, it's out of your system, you know, within, within days or a couple of weeks. And so there's nothing there really to lead to any long-term side effects. And that we've, that's been our experience with lots of other vaccines that have, have been used for, for decades. The, the development process of this, the people know that the Warp Speed Program. What it basically did was it didn't skip any steps of safety, but it overlapped steps. So that usually in a traditional pathway, the trials are done before the manufacturing, the large-scale manufacturing facilities were built, because the company didn't want to invest in those manufacturing facilities until it knew the vaccine worked and that it was approved. What the Warp Speed Program did is it, it, it paid those companies, gave contracts to purchase, you know, basically sight-unseen vaccines. If it turned out the vaccine didn't work, federal government lost their money, the company didn't lose the money. And so it, it gave, it, it told the companies to build the factories now while you're doing the studies. And then, you know, if, if the vaccine doesn't work, you have, you'll shut down the factory. But if the vaccine works, you've got the already vaccines in production and that's what happened. The vaccines got approved and already there was, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of doses already coming off the factory floor and ready to go into arms. And so none of the steps were skipped, but they were overlapped, so we, they were trading. You know, putting federal money in, in, for scaling up quickly so that we could roll this out quickly. Once the, all the safety steps were completed and we knew that the vaccines were safe and effective.
Last question, would you be able to address natural immunity? Is there such a thing? And would you be able to address if you've had COVID, is there still a need to be vaccinated?
There is such a thing as natural immunity, but it's very, very variable depending on the infection you had. And there's not a real consensus on how to measure that and understand how long it lasts. A, a mild infection or an asymptomatic infection may not give a very high level of immunity compared to someone had a very severe infection or was, was hospitalized. And there's no real standard way to measure that. We know with the vaccine, it's a very standard dose of vaccine and you get a very standard response, whereas a, an infection from COVID, the response is, is all over the map. And sometimes it can last long and sometimes it might not last long. What we do know is someone who had a COVID infection, recovered and then got vaccinated, they are more than half as likely to get COVID a second time than someone who had COVID and did not get vaccinated. So vaccination after a COVID infection reduces your chance of getting a second COVID infection at least by fifty percent. So having a previous COVID infection is not a reason not to get vaccinated. We strongly recommend everyone to get vaccinated, whether you've had a COVID infection or not. It will still reduce your risk of a future infection.
Thank you, that's all.
Trustee Smith Folds.
I think most of my questions are gonna be around implementation and policy. How many students do we have in the district currently that are twelve and up, twelve to eighteen?
We have approximately fifteen thousand.
Of those fifteen thousand, how many are already vaccinated?
I do not have that data.
How many students do we have currently in the district that would fall under the SB two-seven-seven exemption?
I think we're looking at that, but and we're looking at that right now. Trustee Smith Folds.
Okay, I'll, I can wait.
Trustee Smith Folds, do you want to ask your next one and then they may find the answer while we're doing your, your fourth one?
Number three, yes, number three. Mr. Booker mentioned some mitigation reductions. Specifically, what are those mitigation reductions that will take place?
Mainly it would have to do with the, the testing. Vaccinated people would not have to be tested unless symptomatic.
But if this passes, all people will be vaccinated, so that means no testing?
Well, we suspect that there will be some people that will have some type of exemption. So they would need to be tested still.
So all exempted individuals will still need to be tested. President Phillips, were they able to come up with that number?
We do, we do not have that data. We're still looking for it. Trustee Smith Folds.
That was my fourth question in this first round.
The next person is Christian. Folks, please ask you, everyone will be able to ask their questions. If you could please stick to four questions for each turn. That will just help to make sure everybody has an equal opportunity to get their questions answered. Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you, President Phillips. This question is for Dr. Fratano. Question is, is COVID dying down or is it continuing to increase?
And I, well, we are, we are coming out of an, another wave. You know, it's been described as the Delta Wave or the Wave of the Unvaccinated. We certainly, you know, it started in July and the majority of cases and the, the majority of people hospitalized have been unvaccinated adults and children. And, and, and certainly a much higher percent at looking at a case rate. It's been most much high, five-ten-fold higher case rates in the unvaccinated. Is this our last wave? We don't really know. You know, we were hoping when we lifted the state blueprint in June and lifted the indoor masking order that we were past any severe waves, but Delta surprised us. And so, you know, we still have the fall holidays where people gather. You know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, and kids coming home from college. So we're still at risk this fall for another wave. And I, I can't really predict whether we're gonna have a, a wave as severe as we had this summer or, or last winter. Only time will tell.
Okay, and, and then what, the next question is, which is for you, Dr. Fratano, is we still have to do, deal with the flu season that's coming, right?
That's correct. You know, last year was, was historic in that there was almost no flu in the United States for the first time really in a hundred years since it's being tracked. And that was most likely due to all the masking and the social distancing. A lot, there were a lot of indoor businesses were closed, schools were all remote. This winter, our society is a whole lot more open. Kids are back in the classroom, indoor dining is, is open, people are gathering more. So we don't really know what's gonna happen this winter. Are we gonna have a bad flu season because, you know, we skipped it last winter? Or is the masking that's we're doing is gonna help protect us? We, we don't really know. I don't think anyone really knows what's gonna happen this, this, this winter. But, you know, certainly a bad flu season is, is, is certainly one possibility.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Crowe?
Yeah, so my first question would be, what resources will the district provide in order to educate the public, specifically parents about the benefits of the COVID-19 vaccine and to specifically debunk myths?
Can you talk about that, Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, there's lots of resources that we, that are uploaded right now on our website and we'll continue to, to build on those around the vaccine. We'll, we'll definitely lean on public health officials to make sure that we're getting everything up, up to date. We definitely want to understand everything about the vaccine mandate to make sure we're communicating that, that out to our families and students as well.
But how are we ensuring that it's accessible? This is probably one of the first few times that I've heard that there was going to be information distributed throughout the school board about it.
Well, we have our channels right now where we get information out, out, out to families, including through our newsletters, social media, robocalls. We can also work to get more contact with folks at schools to make sure that students are ambassadors as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll have to survey our stakeholders and come up with a plan that includes everyone to make sure that, yeah, that no, no one is missing out on this extremely important information.
Okay, my next question would be, again, what protection will there be for students who do not show up to school due to their vaccine side effects? Will there be some sort of like special exemption or protection? Or will it just take from a student's sick leave time?
So so for students, we actually have the opportunity for them to enter into independent study. So it wouldn't be any sick leave time.
So what determines what makes a student vaccine like eligible and ineligible? And like what documents and what the process look like in order to upload it? Because I know that from school laptops and tablets, we're unable to upload our own personal images onto Power School. So I want to ask like, what is admin doing in order to make sure that we can upload these images into Power School through our school resources?
Sure, thank you. So we are going to make sure that there are laptops available and that the school laptops are able to upload that proof. So you would be able to either take a picture with your school laptop or take a picture with your phone and be able to upload into Power School.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for sticking to four. We'll come back to you in the next round, Mr. Trahill.
Yes, thank you. My first question is, will students who get vaccinated be excused for, from school for their vaccine appointments? Will they have the opportunity to make up any work they missed if their vaccine appointment had to lie within school hours?
Trustee Trahill, can I ask you a question again, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry if my volume is low. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Yeah. Will students who get vaccinated be excused from school for their vaccine appointments? And will they have an opportunity to make up any work that they missed while they were at their vaccine appointment?
So yes, they will be, it'll be excused.
If I may add, Dr. Hertz, we are also putting vaccine clinics at every school. So there shouldn't be any issues in terms of a student being vaccinated. Students should able, be able to just be vaccinated right at school. And so if there's any class time miss, it should be a short period of time as we're putting vaccine clinics on school sites.
Oh, with that, I saw the dates for the mobile vaccine clinics at schools. And I only saw, I believe, two dates for most schools. Will this change in the future? And if so, how often will these clinics be here? Because I understand that many students may not be able to go to school. One day they may miss this opportunity. Or people in general may not just have an opportunity to get vaccinated at school just during this time. Since it's just one day or two days, one for each of those.
Yes, some schools started early already with their vaccination clinics. But we are requesting that schools continue to add more dates with the county. So there will be more than one or two opportunities to be vaccinated at school sites.
Thank you. And will will the testing centers in the vaccine clinics be able to, I guess, be in the same area? Or will they be, because I know that some, for example, at my school, we have our testing center in the gym. Where, where will, will these testing centers still be here while the vaccine clinics are here?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the testing will continue. And whichever site they're at, they're going to continue to do it there until we make an adjustment.
Thank you, and will no, yeah, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trahill. We are now going to go back to Mr. Gonzalez's one.
Thank you, President Philip, Philip, sorry. My first question is for Dr. Hertz. These should be pretty quick, so I'll ask them one at a time though. Since we opened school on August 16th, how many students have tested positive in our schools?
Just one second, sir.
No problem. Thank you.
195.
Thank you, sir. Next question. How many staff members have tested positive for COVID since we opened school?
Thirty-six.
Thank you, sir. And last question on this theme. How many classrooms have we had to close and quarantine due to COVID-19 since we opened schools on August 16th?
Thirty-one.
Thank you, sir. And my last question, President Phillips, is for Mr. Booker. Have we considered, if we were to pass these resolutions tonight, a mandate of vax, a vaccination for students and staff? Have we considered transitioning to pool testing at our secondary sites?
We are considering that. As a matter of fact, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with a representative from CDPH that our conversation will be about pool testing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Booker. President Phillips, that's it.
Mrs. Reckler?
Thank you. So I'm not sure who this question is for. It's either for Dr. Farina Tano or for ours, for our staff. So if I heard correctly, we don't have a feel of how many students in our district, 12 and above, might not be vaccinated. Is that correct?
What, what I can tell you is from our overall county statistics. If you look at children
Can I stop you for just a second? Because the information that I'd like to get answered from you is, do you have disaggregated data by region, El Sabrante, Richmond, El Srito, Kensington, 12 to 16, 16 and above?
I, I don't have it broken down. That way, I, I have it broken down by age across the county. And then I have it broken down by the entire eligible population, community by community. But I don't have it sliced both ways for the district cities.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to get at is can we back into it and get a, a guesstimate of how many kids might not be vaccinated? That's, that's my goal with that question. And if we don't have it, that's fine. I'll move on.
Well, what I was about to say is that, you know, if you look at the two largest cities in West Contra Costa County School District, the Richmond and San Pablo, Richmond's vaccination rate is slightly lower than the county as a whole. San Pablo's is about seven points higher. And if you look at the overall vaccination rate of 12 to 15 year olds, it's about 83% across the county. And then for the 16 to 18 year olds, it's about 89%. So given that, you know, your, your two largest cities have an overall vaccination rate similar to the county as a whole. If you assume that the, the rate in teenagers is also similar to the county as a whole, then, then that would be your, your kind of estimate of, of somewhere in the mid eighties, 80 percentiles of, of eligible students I would expect to be vaccinated.
Okay, thank. The next question, I'm going to move, I'm going to move on to C1, which is the employee resolution. And the first question is, do we have a feel for how many employees are not vaccinated? And do we have a feel for how many might not and might walk?
So we did the survey and based on the survey numbers of those that have responded. So we have close to 89, 90% responding. I think we're at now I've lost my number. I have it broken down by different units, but I think it was close to 93% have said that they are fully vaccinated.
And then in a wrong number, 93% is approximately, how many people?
I have to get back to you. I have too many numbers in my head. And then we have those that have not responded yet that we're reaching out to by letter, paper mail, email again, just to make sure we can get all that stuff. So I can get back to you on the number.
Okay, and then finally is just, do we know particular areas? Food service, custodians, you know, can we pocket where we don't have that information? Or we think there might be an effect?
So we, we did it by bargaining unit and yes, I can, I can get that data that specific. It just takes some time to do that.
That would be fine. That's all for this round. Thank you.
Trustee Smith Folds.
So how many surveys have we sent out to parents asking if they are willing to vaccinate their children?
We have not sent out any surveys, Trustee Smith Folds.
When we talked about COVID back in December, we had study sessions. We had those study sessions to break down. We're talking about information gathering. Then we had a study session dedicated to questions. Then we had a study session dedicated to listening to the community. And then we had a study session to talk about the decision. Why are we not doing that same format when it comes to vaccinations?
I think one of the things that we did, as I shared, is we looked at this as a safety issue. We looked at the, the pandemic for one, what was happening within our community. We looked at it as a safety issue as well. And I think finally, as I shared, we looked at the guidance from our safety, our, our health officer. And what I've shared is we typically have followed the guidelines and recommendations from the safety officer. And that was part of the basis of our recommendation as well to the board.
Of the 195 students that the district says were tested positive since August 16th, how many of those were vaccinated students?
I do have some data that doesn't answer your question exactly.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, doctor. If it doesn't answer my question, I'm going to have to wait for that answer because I only get four questions and I've got to treat them like gold. You could just give me one second. Of those 195 students that the district says were tested positive, how many of those were vaccinated students?
We, we can get that information. I, I just don't have it in front of me at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. And I think that I'm, this is maybe my fourth one. Mr. Booker, of the 36 staff members that the district says were tested positive, how many of those 36 were vaccinated?
I would have to review the information again to give you accurate number.
Thank you so much. I believe that that was four for this round.
Yes, ma'am, it was. Thank you very much. We're next going to go to Christian.
Yes, to Dr. Hertz, thank you, to Dr. Hertz. Question, question is, are we continue to see within our district at our school? Do we continue to see a lot of the COVID cases arising more?
Within our schools, within our community, sir. He, he said within our schools or within our community?
In our schools.
Recently, we have seen a decline in the number of cases. So, but it's based on the, the number of people that we, we're testing.
Okay. That's something I have.
Thank you, sir. Next, we're going to go to Co.
Yeah, so Ms. Martin and Dr. Hertz mentioned the vaccination sites and specifically them being displayed as to be determined. So is there a specific vendor that is hosting the distribution of vaccines? And what will the process look like in order to request a vaccine?
So
Go ahead.
So our, our schools are responsible for getting the information for the testing. And then, once they have that information, they will give that to the school community when it's time for them to do their vaccination clinics.
And my next question is, what will the district or school sites do in order to address any possible strikes? Specifically absence protests held by anti-vax parents and students?
Are you talking, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Hertz.
I think if there's strikes, we would certainly work with our union leaders and see how we can resolve that. But also we will work with HR and subs to see what we could do to put subs into the classrooms.
And another question would be, how will students keep track of how many shots students are getting? You know, so since there is the first two shots and then possibly the booster shot, how will the school be able to keep track of those? And what does the process look like for that?
So we would use the information that's in the, the parent portal in Power School. So there is a place where you're able to upload and indicate if you've just had the first shot, if you've had both shots and the status. So we would be pulling reports, monitoring, and then being in communication with schools and with families.
Okay, my last question would be, will the students provide resources like doctors for parents and students to check whether or not someone can be medically exempt? For example, in my, at my school, I could not access my health center's doctor due to my medical insurance. Yeah, just to repeat my question, will the schools provide resources like doctors for parents and students to check whether or not someone can be medically exempt? For example, I couldn't access my health center's doctor due to my medical insurance. So I just wanted to ask like, if it's possible, like, is, is it blinded by insurance? Just to ask if someone can get a note without their insurance being proven?
We are requiring proof from a medical provider, whether that's through insurance or through the county health.
But my question was, are schools providing doctors on campus in order to send out notes for medically exempt students? Because what if they don't have an access to doctors or medical exempt notes from their own healthcare providers? Or they don't have access to hospitals in general?
That is something that we're, we're looking into. We haven't made it to We haven't made a decision on that yet, but that is something that we are looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes, I have, I believe, three more questions. My first one is, I mean, from my experience, I understand that many students may be hesitant to want to get vaccinated or fear the vaccine due to maybe misinformation or unreliable sources. Will any work be done to make sure these students have access to the correct sources? And make sure that they just, they are given the right resources to feel better about this vaccine if they will be mandated to take it?
I'm sorry, trustee Trujillo, you're a little muffled here. We're trying to make out what you were saying.
I'm sorry, but.
Say it again, please.
Yeah, hold on. Will, can you hear me? Okay. Right, yeah, sorry. Will, so from my experience, many students may fear getting the vaccine due to misinformation or not having reliable sources. And will, or is there any work being done to provide students with reliable sources and access to information that will maybe be of service to them in not fearing getting the vaccine, especially if they're mandated to take it? Like, is there any work being done to make sure that they have access to the correct information?
Yes, thank you, sir. I think that goes back to the question that was asked earlier about how do we educate our students and our parents and just getting accurate information out there. So we'll be working closely with our communication department, our new communication director, to make sure we're getting that information out to the students to reduce any stress or fear they may have, educate them.
Thank you. My next question will be, will insurance be required for those who choose to get vaccinated at these school clinics?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question. I'm sorry.
Will insurance be required for those who choose to get vaccinated at the school clinics?
No, insurance will not be required for vaccinations.
Thank you. And for those who do independent study at Vista, I guess Vista Land is what we'd call it. I, from my, from my knowledge, they can come into the classroom if they so choose to. Will those students be required to be vaccinated to come into the classroom?
Yes, they will.
Thank you. And those are all my questions at this time.
Gonzalez Ward.
Thank you. This is my last question for the night, and it's for Dr. Farnatano. Dr. Farnatano, what is the data you are seeing for vaccinated and unvaccinated twelve to eighteen year olds in the county?
So I did look at some data for, I did look at some data for the cities covered by West Contra Costa School District. So if you look at the four week time period ending September sixth, and you look at twelve to seventeen year olds who live in the cities that are served by your district, there, there were twenty eight cases of COVID in vaccinated teens, but a hundred and five cases in unvaccinated teens, even though the, the number of vaccinated teens was much higher. So if you looked at that as sort of a case rate, there was the rate of COVID infections in the unvaccinated teams was teens was five times higher than in the vaccinated teenagers living in your district.
Thank you, Dr. Farnatano.
Mrs. Reckler.
Thank you. I am back to the C one Employee Volunteer Board Member Vaccination. On the other two resolutions, there is mention of impacts and requirements for co-located charter schools. But I don't see anything in this one, C one, about requirements for charter, co-located charter school employee volunteer vaccination. Are there any?
So we did meet with the charter schools and those that are co-located that interact with our students and personnel would fall under the criteria if that resolution was passed, that they would need to be compliant as well.
Okay, thank you. And the next question has to go with, has to go on financial impact. There will be financial impact. There is no question. There will be financial impact. May I please have a back of the envelope estimate on financial impact just for C one?
So there, there are two different areas that there might maybe cost. We're already in conversation with the state of California as it pertains to the implementation of all of these measures. And there seems to be traction for additional funding coming to school districts so that this would not become a burden upon school districts for some of the pieces. We're also working directly with trying to get access to the California Department of Public Health database so that we can do better tracking, so we're not spending so much man hours there and we can spend our time on education. The other factor would be as it pertains to enrollment. And we're working directly with the state as well on that one to look at mitigating factors, whether it be a hold harmless or a change in funding. And there's been several opinion articles going out and discussions with legislators. So back of the envelope, there will be a cost. We have a budget still set aside in Esser for COVID mitigation. At this point, we believe we'll be able to mitigate those expenses within that budget.
On item C one, Employee Volunteer and Board Member Vaccination, what is your dollar range for financial impact? Numbers, please. More than a million, less than a million?
For the compliance of vendor verification?
You might lose people, you might need to replace people, you are running vaccination clinics, you're doing all this paperwork, you're going to need to hire people. On C one, what is your estimate dollar wise range?
So we don't, again, we, we believe that there will be funding from the state as it pertains to a lot of those mitigations we have, our professional experts that we brought in are going to be doing a lot of the monitoring and tracking of gathering that data. They're already tasked to that project, so that's within our operational budget. Should we lose staff? Ultimately, the staff, the position is budgeted. So you still, you replace that staff with another individual.
That was not answered. That's all I have. That's all I have for this round.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Smith folds.
Of the thirty one classrooms that were closed, how many of those classrooms were middle school or high school? According to the district of the thirty one classrooms that were closed, how many of those classrooms were middle school or high school?
Trustee Smith folds. We can get that information to you. I need a few minutes to look at the data.
Okay, and then you said that students who are not vaccinated will go to Vista. That would be their option, correct?
That's correct.
But those students, if they're seven through twelve and they're not vaccinated, they cannot go to Vista Land, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have teachers in Vista Virtual to cover the number of students seven through twelve? Because right now, we don't have any twelfth graders or seventh, or I believe maybe seven, eight, or nine, ten, or eleven graders in Vista Virtual. They're at Vista Land. Is that correct?
We have them in both, but we moved many students to Vista Land to accommodate the number of high school students because we were short a high school teacher.
Do we have that high school teacher now? If this gets implemented, do we have that virtual high school teacher that's going to be able to cover the number of students that will go into Vista Virtual?
The principal is currently working to hire more teachers. I believe that she just interviewed a high school teacher. But what the Vista Land teachers, I think I talked about this at the last board meeting, they have decided to do somewhat of a hybrid model. So they have some students who are still wanting Vista Virtual and some students who have decided they want Vista Land. And they're, they've decided as a team at the school community to actually offer a hybrid model. So even if we had students who had to go to Vista Virtual because of the vaccine mandate, the teachers have already agreed to do a hybrid model.
So the Vista Virtual students would now be taught under the Vista Land teachers just under a hybrid model, so they would not be allowed to go into the campus of Vista Land. But they would be able to have access. So teachers are doing both. Teacher, teachers are room and zooming. What does that look like?
Yes, the teachers have agreed to do room and Zoom as well. Yes. So there are days that they're actually going in to meet with students, students who need to come in in person. Students would still be able with the end of, with the virtual Vista Land. Students are able to still go onto the campus for classes. And those students would go on campus for classes if they have the vaccine. Those who do not would only have the Vista Virtual option with teachers who are doing a hybrid model.
The last one for this round, how many vacancies do we still currently have in teaching staff?
So we still have just below fifty. Many of those are filled with the prep teachers and central office staff.
Can I get an exact number of below fifty?
Well, we just hired two or three more teachers, so forty seven. I mean, I just, it changes every day, so I can check.
That's my last question for this round.
Mr. Christian.
I don't have any more questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Cole.
Will LSAs rapid testing resources still be on campus, considering now that students do not have to test if they're vaccinated or asymptomatic?
Yes.
And since students are being vaccinated presumably at the vaccination sites, will they be sent home right after the thirty minute or however many minutes of observation? Or will they just be sent back to class?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question. Can you repeat it again, please?
So presumably, if students are being vaccinated on campus through the vaccination sites, will they be sent home right after the thirty minute or however long period observation? Or will they be sent back to class wherever they need to go?
No, so if a student isn't positive and they're vaccinated, they can return to class?
This is regarding being vaccinated. Will they have an observation period? And if, and if after that, will they be sent home? Or will they be sent back to class after receiving their vaccination and doing the observation period?
We haven't worked out those logistics, but normally if they are not feeling the effects of the vaccination, they should be able to return to class. And sorry for misunderstanding your question.
It's okay. Last question, a lot of people were concerned about this in public comments. So I just wanted to ask and clarify, was there a specific reason why this special board meeting was moved on last minute?
Yes, I actually had talked to board president and shared that we were still getting information from the attorney. So the original conversation was based on one resolution. But after talking to the attorney and also some board members, we knew that we also wanted to bring a proposal for vendor mandate, which meant that we needed to work with them on that vendor resolution and policy. And then also, we still had some questions about what LAUSD was doing and then what we wanted to put into our resolution as well. So it just needed more time. So it was really conversations between myself and the attorney and getting all of the documents together.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask that for clarification for the public, but that is all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Trujillo.
Yes, thank you. My first question is, where will unvaccinated students who are twelve years old and in fifth or sixth grade go if Vista is only for seventh through twelfth grade?
Ms. Martin, can you answer that question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yes, where will unvaccinated students who are twelve years old in fifth or sixth grade go if Vista is only for seventh through twelfth grade?
They would be enrolled in Vista Virtual. Vista Virtual is for kinder through twelfth grade.
Thank you.
If their parents, so choose.
Thank you. My second one is, what will we do in terms of like, well, I understand that there are fake vaccine cards. That's, that's a thing now. What will we do to prevent that, you know, people uploading fake vaccine cards? Or using fake vaccine cards to get their kids to stay in school? What will we do about that?
We do have the ability through California Gov. to look at our, look at vaccination status. So, but we also will get information or guidance from the county with regard to how we're going to review those, those vaccination courts.
Thank you. And those are all my questions for now.
I'm going to jump in. Is Vista Virtual currently understaffed?
Yes.
Does Vista Virtual currently have a waitlist?
Yes.
Are the individuals who are on the waitlist first in line to get new seats at Vista Virtual?
Yes.
And can someone please explain how kids who are primary students who are unvaccinated will have seats at Vista Virtual?
Well, our, our principal is currently working on enrollment, and so this vaccine mandate would not occur until January. So by January, I've talked to her and the goal is to have more teachers onboarded so that we can accommodate students who would, but the vaccine mandate is for, so our elementary students would essentially not be impacted. This is more for our students who are twelve and up. So we'd be looking at those students who are twelve and up, who are on the list and where their spots would be. But students, you know, obviously, this is only for our elementary students. Our twelve through eighteen year old students could actually go to Vista Virtual or Vista Independent Study. But if you went to Vista Independent Land, you would have to have a vaccination as well. So, but essentially, the goal is we're trying to recruit more teachers. And by January, the goal is to ensure that our waitlist is cleared so that we can accommodate more of those students.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, so I mean, again, we are constantly trying to recruit more teachers. And especially in January, we will have more teachers that are graduating from programs and able to come on board. So the recruitment process continues for both the virtual and in-person learning.
Currently, we've moved about twenty students off the waitlist since the last board meeting. So the goal is to continue to move students off the waitlist and into the program. So as we get more teachers, we take more students off the waitlist.
I'm just going to recap really quickly what I heard because this came up in closed, open session. Mr. Trujillo just brought it up, and it was on the phone line as well. This doesn't really apply to primary students because of the age, so it's not really an issue. So it's not really an issue where primary students who are unvaccinated will go. That's what I heard, and I'm just recapping it because I know multiple people brought that up this evening. So uh, we are going to go back to Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Fields. I have questions, but your questions actually sparked the question for me. So uh, the only question I have in this round is um. Ms. Martin, I apologize, I couldn't, I forgot your last name for a second. I apologize for that. Uh, Ms. Martin, um, do you think that some of the families who are currently on a, on the waitlist? For the virtual school with a mandate mandated vaccination would actually wanna send their kids to in-person school? Back to their homeschool if we've moved this forward?
That's a great question, um, and one that I could actually have our. Uh, family engagement and attendance department reach out to families and find out. Um, if in fact they would go back to school with the mandate. Um, I don't have that answer yet, but I can ensure that I bring that back uh, to the next board meeting.
Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you, President Fields.
Mrs. Reckler?
I'm moving on to C two, which is for the vendors. What is the estimate of how much disruption we think will happen? If C two uh, becomes a board policy? Particular areas, like what are we thinking? After-school Mesa band programs? Any kind of vendor?
I'm sorry, you're talking about in terms of the vaccinations?
Correct, so if C two for vendor vaccinations. Vendor vaccine requirement, what kind of disruption do we think will happen in the district?
I can't really give you a, an estimate on the disruption. There will be uh, some disruption because uh, some of these vaccination uh, clinics will occur during school hours. Um, but however, we are looking at some other options with regard to weekend vaccinations as well.
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about how many vendors are gonna back out of contracts, not show up. People not coming to after-school programs, uh, any kind of vendor that, you know, works with us. I'm sure there's a population that will. Quit or not wanna service us, or I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at here. Is that there, I'm assuming there's some sort of disruption that will ha- happen with this. Have you guys thought it through? What do you think it would be?
So that there is current language, um, October fifteenth, all contractors. Dealing with the district will have to be either vaccinated or show proof of vaccination. So this is just one more layer that would be added to that requirement. Um, so vendors would have the time between October and December in order to uh, get their employees vaccinated. But there is state law already that would mandate them to vaccinate or show proof of vaccination. So it's moving down that road already.
And then in terms of financial impact. Once again, I'm sure we're gonna get the same answer, but what is the dollar amount we think is gonna be? Assigned to this particular part of the, the package tonight, C two?
And it, it's hard to give a full estimate. We, we do know that large employers already have federal mandates. So those that already have a hundred employees are going down this pathway. Will be more focused on the smaller vendors and how they provide services. To be able to determine if there is indeed a financial impact where we're losing services and have to buy and contract to a different place. We can't give that answer tonight. We are looking at every possible impact. Where we do have service providers to determine if we will now need to rebid. Or find additional service providers.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move on now to the student uh, part of this. Um, for private tutors, who pays?
That's, that would be an expense of the parent.
Okay, thank you. And can you guarantee that there's gonna be a vaccination clinic at every site to meet our timelines for students?
All the information has actually been sent out to every single school. All of the paperwork has been sent for every single school. The only task that a principal had at this point was to send out the information to their families. And they also have to have families sign up. And so a spreadsheet was sent to every single principal to get signups of students. I believe that once this board meeting ends today, we will have more families actually signing up. Because the clinics from the county want to know the number of students that are being vaccinated. Um, on each given day that they are coming out. Um, there has been a little bit of a wait time to actually get appointments with the county for the vaccine clinics because of their own staffing. Um, but the goal is to ensure that we do have that in place. And we also have another partnership that we're working on to um, add to the county uh, vaccine clinics for our school sites.
So if I may, I don't have that presentation up, but I felt like there were a lot of blanks on those school uh, on that matrix. Um, so once again, can we guarantee a vaccine clinic at every site to meet the timelines?
I am going to guarantee a vaccine clinic at every school site. That is listed, cause we're, we're offering them at our middle and our high schools, not every single school, just our middle and our high schools.
Okay, thank you. That, that's it for this round.
Um, Board, at some point, we're gonna have some motions. And when those motions uh, come, we will have opportunity for discussion. So if you could please try as the best you can to be succinct with your questions. And to not include the commentary, cause you'll have an opportunity to uh, during the discussion period to make whatever comments you wish. Um, so we're gonna go to uh, Trustee Smith Folds next.
Have you surveyed the city daycares that are on our campuses to see how many of their employees are vaccinated or not?
No, we do not have full, accurate information from all of our vendors.
Can unvaccinated teachers teach at virtual school? Can they apply to teach at virtual school? Those teachers who choose not to vaccinate, or can they apply to teach at virtual school?
Yes.
But only after this mandate, correct? Because before, they could not apply to teach at virtual school.
Okay, I'm going to let Marcy answer that question.
So it's a mandate, and so they would have to apply still through the um, accommodation process for medical? Or the religious exemption process? So that is, those requirements are still in place.
Do, well, do virtual school staff need to be vaccinated? If they have no contact with students, do the Vista Virtual teachers and staff have to be vaccinated?
So I believe, I mean, we're, we're doing this for all employees.
And then finally, when the five to eleven year old vaccinate, for this round. When the five to eleven year old vaccination comes around, are you going, does the district plan to make that an automatic mandate?
So I just wanna pop in really quick. This is an extremely sensitive topic. Uh, five to eleven is not on the agenda. Um, so if we could. Stay away from that uh, in this conversation, that would be great. I'm not trying to silence anyone. Um, but that's an extremely sensitive topic, and it's not on the agenda.
Dr. Hurst, when you come back to the board. I'll save that one for comments. That's all for this round. I'll have more next round.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Christian?
Okay, thank, thank you. Um. Uh, to Dr. Hurst, um, would this mandate uh, be some, similar to like Oakland and the LA area?
It is very similar to uh, LA. Uh, not uh, quite like Oakland. Oakland does not have a uh. Date timestamp for the adults and the students.
Okay. And the last one, last question to Dr. Fratano. Um, that question would be for uh, why do you think so many people are reluctant to take the vaccine?
Um, there's a lot of different reasons. Um, you know, unfortunately, one of the big reasons is misinformation. You heard a lot of misinformation uh, tonight. Um, I think there is, um, you know, there's a lot of different places where people get their information. And some of it, it's, it's not accurate. Um, I, there are reasonable concerns about, you know, safety. Um, but I think, you know, there is really a strong body of evidence um, on the safety of these vaccines. And um, you know, I, I think um, you know, there's, there's unfortunately. Um, you know, a lot of um, just misinformation that creates doubts in people's minds. Or, you know, um, and it's, it's unfortunate. Because um, you know, a lot of lives have been lost uh, across the nation. Uh, by people listening to misinformation and, and not being vaccinated and, and then getting uh, COVID. And, you know, I think the vast majority of residents uh, in Contra Costa County. Um, have choo- chosen to get vaccinated. Uh, but there is, there is a, a, a small percentage who still have concerns. Um, you know, some of those are legitimate, and some of those are based on misinformation.
Alright, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you very much, Christian. We're going to go to Cole.
So if a vaccination mandate is being enforced, will since require vaccination cards to be carried around on students? And if so, can vaccination card copies be used to verify?
We will take copies. Um, it's always good to carry around the card. Um, because I think a lot of places require that they show uh, proof of vaccination. Uh, but we will uh, take copies uh, and that will be handled uh, by the sites.
And will uh, images on your phone um, also be used to be verified? Because I tend to carry my picture of it, just because I don't wanna lose my vaccine card.
We have taken pictures um, as a form of identification for a vaccination court.
And that for students who only receive the first shot or do not complete the recommended amount of shots. Um, will they still have to follow the COVID nineteen safety protocols, like wearing a mask and social distancing? I know that you said it would be reduced, but.
Yeah, as far as the masking goes, that, that's one of the stronger mitigation strategies, so we will continue to do masking. Uh, there will be some form of social distancing as well as hygiene. But in terms of the testing, uh, that's where you'll see the, the benefit of somebody that is fully vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. That is all.
Thank you very much. Cole, Trujillo?
Thank you. Um, wha- what will happen to teachers' classes who, who choose not to get vaccinated? Like if a teacher chooses not to get vaccinated, what will happen to their class? Will they um, still be at that site and just do Zoom classes with their students? Or will there be a sub and they will be on leave or not able to work?
So under the current uh, process, they would not be able, unless they went through the accommodation process. They would receive a letter that they were not able to be on class in, in the classroom. So we would go through that process, and again, we would either have to find a sub, a replacement. Um, as we, as we're following what we've outlined above.
Thank you. And do we have any data on uh, how many, um, a number of staff who do not plan on getting vaccinated?
But we do, um, we've broken it down. We actually have, in terms of our teachers, we have ninety-six reporting that they are fully vaccinated. We have another over fifty that are saying that there are eight are partially vaccinated. And six that say that they have not started the process. And then um, about seventy that have not responded. Those are new hires, so that some of them haven't responded yet. So it's a pretty large number, and again, we're gonna continue to give the, them the opportunity to be vaccinated.
You, you said, wait, how many teachers total um, are vaccinated, you said?
Uh, close to ninety-seven percent.
Oh, ninety-seven percent. Okay. So, oh yeah, did you give um, percentages or actual numbers?
First one was a percentage, ninety-seven. And then I said an additional um, over another ten people. That are either partially vaccinated or have not started the process but want to be vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. And um, what will happen to students who uh, still attend school after those fifteen days? Uh, after the mandate? Um, wha- what would happen if they just showed, showed up to school if their parents still made them even without um, updating and, updating their vaccine record?
So you were asking about students, correct?
Yes.
You're asking if a student does not show their vaccination status? Or does not get vaccinated and comes to school anyway?
Um, does not get vaccinated and comes to school anyways.
Okay. Uh, that's something we have to discuss further um, as a district. Um, I'll get back to you on that, but the reality is we're going to be asking students to enroll in Vista. Or unenroll in the district.
Uh, do, do you know how soon we will have that information?
We can bring that back at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
We're gonna go back to Gonzalez, Hoi.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Mrs. Reckler?
I think this might be my last three. The first question is on page four of the student vaccination requirement. And I'm wondering if we can get a clarification on adult education. Uh, the sentence is unclear. Uh, charter school students on co-located school sites who are eligible to receive the COVID nineteen vaccine. Including adult education students, excluding those students with approved exemptions. So basically to cut it short, is it only adult education students that are co-located? Or is it all adult education students that are included in this as well?
So the, the wording there would be, that would be all adult education students.
Okay, thank, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, this keeps shutting off. So signal. Uh, the second is, is that we are obviously on the verge of uh, booster shots as well. So I'm assuming that's part of the protocol as well? To track boosters as they get authorized?
We had not considered the boosters as part of this, just the two shots. Trustee Reckler.
And then finally, uh, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing. What is the district's plan to staff up, commit the resources, time, energy and money? To making this successful, operationally excellent execution? And um, establishment of practice?
I think part of it is uh, just listening to the feedback from all of the questions that we're getting from all of the trustees. Uh, and then sitting down with our team and uh, really outlining. How we're gonna move forward with all of the, the pieces that you share with us that we still need to think through. I think uh, the term operational excellence has come up um, more than a few times. So we've taken that to heart as well. So we take that into our meetings and we plan accordingly. I think the message is received, uh, and even tonight, just listening again to the feedback. I just understanding that we still have a lot of work to do to figure out some of the pieces, but. But operational excellence is certainly something that we take seriously for the team.
Thank you. I believe I am complete.
Smith Folds.
If adult education students are not vaccinated, what's their virtual option?
Currently, the adult education schedule has all ESL program offerings, both in-person and virtual. So they already have the option of each right now in the current structure.
For everything that their curriculum offers or just ESL?
ESL is the required offering. Everything else is fee-based.
How many vendors directly impact black and brown students? Example, Mafanikiyo program. How many outside vendors do we use in Mafanikiyo program?
I don't have the exact number of our vendors for our after-school programs. That's, sorry, that serve African-American students or students of color. I can get that for you, um, at the next meeting or send that to you via email. I will say that, um, Martine Blake, the Director over Family and Community Engagement, has been in touch with all of our vendors to make them aware of possible, um, vaccination mandate. And they are working to also ensure that they are in partnership with the district and aligning the same mandate with their organizations as well.
Exactly. How many teachers do not want to be vaccinated? Exact numbers. How many teachers do not want to be vaccinated?
So again, this was pulled three days ago and, um, people have changed their mind. Forty-four either do not wish to be vaccinated or do not wish to disclose, disclose their status. That's what I have.
Do you have the infrastructure to put forty-four people into these vacant spots that will become available?
So I don't, again, we already have vacancies, so I can't say that yes, we do. But again, I do, I do believe that some people have been changing their mind over time. I've even, this past, uh, day, I've received five vaccination, um, documents for people who had said that they did not want to be vaccinated. So I think that number will change over time and we have the next two months. And we may, you know, have, be looking at, uh, reevaluating our classes and seeing if there's, um, changes that can be made to our classes based on enrollment. And also, uh, we, a lot of our subs are in classrooms because of leave of vacancies and that changes as well.
And then who's going to enforce the mandate? I believe that this was asked before, but I just want a little bit more clarity on that. Are teachers going to get a list of students who are allowed to be in their class? Who's going to enforce that? Kids come to my first period class, I have attendance roster on that attendance roster in Power School. When I take my attendance, is it going to say V vaccinated? So you're allowed to be here or is it going to indicate that you're not allowed to be here? Who's going to do the enforcement?
We are going to work on what that looks like before our January deadline. But I will say that I know that as a cabinet and as a district, we'll work on a strategy in which we're ensuring that families know before the January deadline what that process will be for their students. So it will be no surprise and we will not be putting teachers in a situation in which they're informing students of their vaccination status. But we will develop a protocol for that and provide that to the board.
That's all for this round. President Phillips, I do have more.
We're going to go to Christian. I just want to remind the board, uh, to please try to stick to four questions per round. That's the only way to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to ask questions. Mr. Christian?
Do not have any more questions at this time.
Okay, um, Co.
So regarding education, uh, I mean, regarding educating the public about the vaccine, are there resources addressing, uh, racial sensitivity and inequity surrounding the vaccine? Specifically towards minority groups, just trusting the government and the healthcare system?
Yeah, that's something we'll definitely have to look into and will be a key part of our strategy to ensure that everyone gets, gets, gets the same word.
So what will it look like? Um, will it be on like the website, social media? Will there be a holding, um, workshops and, uh, possibly in-person, uh, events?
Certainly, um, and there's different ways that we can encourage students to, to get vaccines as well, including campaigns on campus where students can give reasons on why they're, they're getting vaccinated and share, share it with each other. For example, you know, a student could say, I'm getting vaccinated to, to protect my grandmother. Um, and that, that would encourage other students to, to think about other reasons besides the fact that they're mandated to, to get the vaccine. So we'll definitely be thinking about different strategies to reach different student groups.
Yeah, so I've mentioned them student ambassadors with, uh, Mr. Booker. But is that what they're going to be working with, the Contra Costa COVID-19 Youth Ambassador Program? Because I was a part of the pilot program, uh, the first twenty-five ever in California.
Yes, that's one of the strategies that we're looking at. Actually, I'm just waiting for, for the call.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trillo.
Yes, um, uh, my first question is, uh, besides testing, will other COVID-19 protocols, um, or what other COVID-19 protocols w- will change?
Well, I think in terms of strategy, uh, vaccination being the most effective strategy for reducing the spread of COVID-19, uh, the mitigation strategies are kind of like a Swiss cheese approach. Uh, and the more layers of, of cheese is the more holes that you cover up. So, uh, when we look at strategies, you know, we look at the masking, the social distancing, as well as the, um, hygiene, um, and, you know, just making sure that we are adhering to those on, on our sites. So we will continue our strategies, um, and like I said, it, the, the one that would probably be most affected in terms of vaccination would be the, uh, testing process or testing cadence.
Thank you. And I think this one might be from Ms. Williams. From my understanding, I, I believe, uh, i- is there a shortage in gen- genders especially?
So yes, I mean, we have shortages across the, um, entire staff, classified and certificated. We are hopeful to be able to, um, bring on more custodians. We are working with them to get on boarded. We actually have, for example, nine pending. We're waiting for them to, um, either do the strength test, bring in some, uh, documentation. So we're working to support them to get them on board. But yes, um, over the next, um, six weeks, I think we will be able to, um, add more custodians to our, to our staff.
Thank you. And why I asked that question was because, um, will, will the pattern of, uh, or w- will, wh- when the mandate is in place, uh, will the same effort be put in hiring custodial staff, uh, before, be the same? Because, uh, I understand that hiring, cause it's, cause so you, I just want to like, make sure hiring, hiring custodial staff is not just, being prioritized for COVID-19. And it will, you, you guys will continue to hire custodial staff and, and push for it going forward, like the same way you guys are now with all staff.
The answer is yes. We're continuing to, to grow our custodial staff. And we're continuing to bring new, new custodians in and looking to grow both of our, um, evening crews to get more folks that are able to respond to our needs across the district.
Thank you. And my, my last question is, um, I understand it, um, sometimes, um, something that maybe could go along with what Trusty Co. said about earlier, about, um, maybe certain groups, uh, of people not wanting to get vaccinated due to their distrust of the government. From my understanding, uh, some places are offering, um, like, I guess, other incentives like, like prizes or things, you know, offering things to people, uh, to encourage them to get vaccinated. Um, is that something that, that could be looked into? I understand it's maybe not, um, well, maybe it's not the first thing we, we would think of, but is that possible, like, maybe like, just like, just something to, to incentivize people to get, or students to get vaccinated, like gift cards or, or just something like that?
I apologize, I missed the beginning of the question.
Yeah, um, is there something to incentivize students to get vaccinated, like prizes? Cause I understand that in some places, they are offering prizes and, and gift cards and sorts of, um, I guess, almost like, uh, just, just things to incentivize students to get vaccinated, vaccinated.
Most certainly, um, we can work with our partners to, to figure out what sort of incentives we can, uh, present to students to get vaccinated. But mo- most, most certainly, we'll, we'll be thinking about different ways that we can incentivize students to get vaccinated.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Gonzalez Hoy.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Reckler.
No further questions. Thank you. Just comments.
Smith Folds.
How many students did not do well in distance learning slash virtual learning that it's going to end up being again? If they're not vaccinated, how many students do we know?
The first part of your question was how many students did not do well? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am. Like, do we have any data on how many students did not perform well in, in a distance learning type of educational environment?
I don't have that data currently. Progress reports, report cards have not come out yet. So I would have that data at that time, um, that is in November. Um, I can get that information for you.
And I would like the information about the students who we have in classes now. How many of those students did not perform well in distance learning? And it impacts because if they are now forced to go to virtual school, I would like to see how that's going to correlate. Does that make sense? The second part of my question is, the students who are not vaccinated, will they go through the same interview process that the students who are applying to virtual school go through the same interview slash orientation process? Because virtual school, virtual school has a commitment from the parents to be involved in it. So will these students still go through the same interview slash orientation process? And will we still get same commitment from their parents?
Yes.
And then my third question, how many students do you think that this will impact? How many students, rough numbers, raw numbers, how many students do you think? And please overestimate, because we only thought seventy-five were going to go to virtual school in the beginning. Overestimating, how many students do you think this will impact?
I honestly do not have a rough number of how many students would be impacted. I think it, you know, we'll have a better analysis of that, um, soon after the vaccine mandate. Depending on what happens here today, I think we'd have a better number of how many students and families are in fact opposed to, um, a vaccine mandate and will want to go to Virtual Academy.
Thank you. I think those are all the questions for now.
Christian?
Uh, no further questions.
Co.
Just one question, um, are teachers going through or staff members going through any sort of training to respond to any sort of, uh, side effects? For example, um, after the observation period, um, perhaps the student goes back to class and they might be having a bad side effect. Is there procedure or is there some sort of training for the teacher to prepare to address for this issue?
So we don't currently have a training for that specific, but we have the ability to upload a training and make sure that our staff members have access to that.
But is it being enforced into their training or is it just offered for them to refer to if needed?
We can do either one and we would make sure that they were required to watch that, especially if it was just a quick, short one.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Trillo.
Yeah, I just, uh, this is a question I had earlier, which I kind of, I'm still a little bit unsure about. And my question was, uh, wh- what would happen if, what would happen to students who, who walk on campus and are not vaccinated, um, after the fifteen-day mandate period is in place? Like, like what would hap- would they be escorted off campus? Would their parent have to come pick them up? What would happen? Maybe it was answered, I just don't remember.
What I stated was, was that as district staff, we will come up with a protocol around how we will address students who are unvaccinated after the deadline. At this moment, we don't have a protocol for that, but we will ensure that there are measures put in place to inform parents well ahead of the January deadline of the protocol for students.
Uh, thank you. I just, I, I may have forgotten if I need it for my notes, so thank you.
It's okay. No problem.
Trillo, was that it?
Yes, that is it.
Okay, Gonzalez Hoy.
No more questions. Thank you.
Reckler.
Nothing more. Thank you.
Smith Folds.
I have two questions. Um, how many students got vaccinated today? You said you had vaccination clinics today. I know there was one at Hercules Middle School. How many students got vaccinated today?
I don't have that information today around the number of students that were vaccinated.
And then my final question is, Dr. Hirst, could you please explain to me again why this is a special meeting and why this was not at a regular school board meeting under discussion and/or under action?
Yeah, we just felt that, uh, one, it was a topic that needed its own individual conversation and just anticipating, uh, a lot of questions coming from, for the trustees as it has. And then also, um, I did go to the, the president and just shared, uh, the request to have this as a special meeting as well. So mainly it was because of the content and what I thought was going to take, uh, a length of time to cover.
That made me think of another question. Thank you for that. Do you feel, uh, Dr. Hirst, this is my third question in this round. Dr. Hirst, do you feel that this topic deserves to have a study session? Type of, um, a study session type of informational where we, like we did before. Again, I mentioned that we had study sessions around COVID. We had an information gathering study session. We had one focused only on questions. We had one for listening to the community. And then we had one to make the decision. Do you believe that this topic should have something like that? Or do you believe the decision should be made tonight?
I think you could have had a study session, but I, I did request for it to, um, come before the board tonight with a recommendation for a decision to be made this evening. And again, um, it really was based on a couple of different things. One, safety for our students and staff. And then also looking at the recommendation that came down from our, our health officer. I think that played a big portion of it, uh, into it as well. And just following that guideline, um, so yes, it could have been a study session, but I think I brought the recommendation for it to be made this evening.
Thank you very much. Those, those are all of my questions.
All right, um, I'm going to go through and make sure everybody's done. Christian?
No further questions.
Co.
No further questions. Thank you.
Trillo.
Uh, no, I, I do not have any more questions.
Gonzalez Hoy.
No further questions. Thank you.
And Reckler.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, and Smith Folds, do you have any more?
No further questions.
Okay. So the question portion. So the question portion is over because we did questions for all three resolutions. So we're not going back to questions. Um, so the first resolution is C one, resolution requiring employee, volunteer and board member vaccination. And I have a motion to adopt this resolution.
President Phillips, I would like to move this resolution.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Gonzalez Hoi. It was seconded by Christian. Board, we are on to discussion. Remember, we're not in questions now. This is the opportunity for you to make comments. We are doing this one resolution at a time. So keep your comments on this resolution, on this motion. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, President Phillips. Um, I have just a short statement for all three. Is it okay if I make it now?
We're gonna go through each one.
I just didn't separate it. Um, okay. Well, uh, that's okay. Thank you. Uh, so as we heard tonight from Dr. Farnatano, the COVID nineteen vaccine is the strongest protection and mitigation strategy to protect against the spread of the virus. I do believe it is our responsibility to keep staff and students as safe as possible. I believe that a vaccine mandate alongside other, our other mitigation mitigating strategies will protect our community and will keep students in the classroom. It is obvious to me that we have a lot of work to do around education of our community on the importance of the vaccination. And I'm encouraged with the partnership with the county, but if we pass this tonight and our other two resolutions, I hope to see a lot of communication, possibly seminars or webinars. Um, and even the idea that moves forward for us, that our student trustee co-presented to have student ambassadors. As Dr. Farnatano mentioned, passing these mandates will reduce the number of COVID cases on youth staff in our community. It is my wish that none of our family, students and our fa- or family members lose anyone to this pandemic. I have lost myself three loved ones to this virus and I know the importance to do anything in our power to stop this pandemic. I believe that us passing this resolutions will help our community and will reduce the risk of our schools to spread the COVID nineteen. I hope and encourage our full board to pass this resolution as well as, as well as the two following and give staff the power to push forward in this direction. We still have time to figure out the details and I believe in partnership with our county health, bargaining units, student leaders and parent organizations, we can do so. This is just another step in the right direction. I wanna thank our staff and our county for the partnership to bring this forward and I hope that we all vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Reckler.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoi. That was really very nice and I don't have anything written, but I just have some comments from the meeting. Um, and you know, uh, there's a lot of talk about what does board, what does the board do and what does staff do? And the board is the what and the staff is the how. We're supposed to make the decision and then staff is supposed to execute. And while I have always tried to keep that separation, you know, I cannot help but be operations minded and I'm very mindful of what the decisions up here do throughout the entire organization. And so the organization has a lot to do. This is not easy. This is not just a vote and we go home. This opens up a ton of work that this organization has to do. Your contingency plans need contingency plans and those contingency plans need contingency plans. Your timeline is short. You cannot do it with the amount of staff that you have. There's no way. The nurse that called in, she's right. There's no way. And you cannot load the sides up, the sites up. You cannot give them one more thing to do. So it's all of you that own this and need to figure it out. That means more, you know, like whatever it means that, you know, you need to do it and do it well. It is a heavy lift. So I'm, if, if there needs to be a recess now, if you need to pull the plug, if the lights need to go out, if like, whatever needs to happen. You know, I want to know that there is going to be operational excellence in executing every part of this from communication to vacancies, to education, to providing vaccines. I mean, I'm sure that the kids that we've got now that aren't being vaccinated, I'm sure it's just because they just can't get there or don't have access. And, you know, that this is gonna become your responsibility to execute this. Um, and you know, you, the costs, uh, you know, there will be financial impact and I have to ask that you have this covered. Um, uh, and so, so that is my, that is my ask. Uh, I also got a very thoughtful email, which I'd like to, uh, also, the board was challenged tonight. And it is, uh, listening to some of the comments tonight, it's clear that we need as educators to make more concerted effort to teach our students statistically, li- statistical literacy and basic logic. I've been trying to fit that into some of my classes and there is probability in statistics and is math. But the American people need more skill in reading numbers and interpreting arguments. This is the job of public education and I would love to see the board consider how WCCUSD can address this crisis of understanding of fa- of facts. Thanks for reading. Thanks for sending. That's it.
Smith folds.
I think one of the things that we have to center in value is the voices. There are no surveys. There's no data. There's nothing, the, the answers, the questions were not answered. Um, whether this is right or this is wrong, doesn't come into play when we don't have answers to the questions. We need to have the answers first. We need to have the information first. So we can then make decisions and make policy that will be able to be implementable. I think that what trustee Gonzalez Hoi said is accurate. We do need to keep all staff, all students, all families safe. But we need to have all the information to make the policy to be able to implement that. When we make bad policy, when we make bad implementable or non-implementable policies, we see the result. We, we think big, but what can we actually execute? What are we able to put into practice and put into play? And we have to ask these questions of now. We have to ask these questions right now. Before we say yes, we have to know what happens to the students. How many students is this gonna impact? What happens to the teachers? How many teachers is it gonna impact? If we have forty-four that it could possibly impact and we already have forty-seven vacancies, what does that mean? I just want to know the answers to the questions before we talk about the policy that we're gonna ask you to implement. Because it goes down. It doesn't just stay at the district level. Then you turn around and ask administrators to implement something and they turn around and ask teachers to implement something. I think we need to all stay safe, one hundred percent, but also think we need the answers to these questions. How many students does this affect that are fall under SB two seventy-seven? If you don't know, we can't make decisions. If you don't know how many of our fifteen, fifteen thousand twelve and above students that are already vaccinated, if you don't know that number, then how are we making decisions? Like, we need to be able to have the information brought to us first. So we can make an accurate decision. We need to be able to hear from the community first. This was a twenty-four hour notice. That's coming from a seat of privilege that we think people can drop everything and come to a board meeting in twenty-four hours. We're missing some information when we don't properly notice these things. This is a huge conversation and we should have had, our communications director should have had survey data. We should have had the exact number of people who used the vaccination clinics today. We should have had the exact number of people in each one of our communities that this would impact. How many people is this gonna impact? What is virtual school going to look like once this is implemented? All I'm asking for is before you ask us to set a policy that has ripple effects. So many ripple effects. We need to be able to have our questions answered. We need, and if you have to come back to give us those answers, to give us that plan, to let us look at that, great. But when you say we hope the numbers of teachers that want to get vaccinated goes down, we cannot plan on hopes. We can't plan. We have to have numbers. We have to have something that's raw, like hard data for us to start asking questions. When you don't know how many kids are already vaccinated, that's an issue. When you don't know how you're gonna implement, whether they have to carry their cards or what, if teachers, if this is gonna be on the site, the head of teachers to implement this, all of that matters. All of these little details matter when you're making policy, when you're trying to make a policy that's actually implementable. It matters. It matters to how we conduct ourselves from the board. I'm, I'm disturbed that my questions were not answered. It disturbs me not because of what we're talking about. Again, whether you're pro or anti, that is not what I'm discussing. I'm discussing the fact that I don't have answers. So when I say yes to this and then I don't have answers to how it's going to impact, that becomes a problem on me. It's the same thing that in my community and all of our community, all of our kids. It becomes our issue because we set policy. If we set bad policy because we don't have the answers, that becomes a problem that needs to be laid at the feet of the board. We already saw this happen in spring. We saw it. We saw this happen in fall reopening. We saw it when we did not have the answers to questions and we just said something. And then the implementation was unable to be done to its highest fidelity. We need to do it differently this time. Get the answers to the questions, have the study sessions, have the community input. Give some real options. Virtual school doesn't work for every student. That's why they were pushing to go back in brick and mortar. If virtual school didn't work or distance learning didn't work for students, what impact are we having if we say that's your only option? We have to ask these questions. Wh- what teachers are we losing? How, what are we valuing? Do we need to keep our teachers safe? One hundred percent, one hundred percent. We need to know the data about are the teachers who are not vaccinated getting tested, which we said they were. We said that their non-vaccinated staff and teachers would get tested. Are we doing it? Do we need to know the raw numbers about the students who are not vaccinated? Are they getting tested? Are we pushing that? Are we saying that if you're not vaccinated as a student, you should be getting tested or you have to be getting tested? There's so much in between step one and where we're going right now. We need to talk about this in totality, in complete totality, and we have to have the answers. Thank you.
Trustee Smith folds. I'm asking this question based on what I heard you say. Do you wanna make a motion to table these items?
President Phillips, let me, let me think about that and can you come back to me after everyone makes their statement and let me think on this, please?
Yes, ma'am. Christian, you're next.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, I'm gonna say thanks, thank you to everyone who participated in this, this evening. We actually, when you look at this pandemic, we've been faced with it, it was going on two years now. It will be two years, right? This pandemic is, is, it's, it's serious all across this nation. And, and I mean, the nation, but the world is everywhere. So we have to look at how do we keep safe and what do we need to do? This thing is real. And we're not living, we're not, you know, you know, look, fairy tale land, this thing is real and it's taken many lives, young, middle age, older age. And it's continued to, I mean, do we have a solution? Do other people have a solution about what needs to happen? How can you stop it? How can you stop COVID nineteen? It's moving. Many lives are leaving this earth early. So what, I mean, what do you do? That's something to really think about. You know, you know, as kids, we grew up, had vaccinations to, to, um, they would attend school. You had those shots. And I know that you know, y- y- you don't trust the process because a lot of stuff has happened. But my thing is, what do we have? Who do we turn to? Who's gonna fix it? Who gonna stop COVID nineteen? Cause COVID is doing this job. But the question is, what are we gonna do to, to fight it all? So we, we got a journey. Yes, we do. COVID is gonna be with us for a while, but what do we do? But we have to keep this in mind that we deal with teachers, staff, students, everybody. And everybody's been affected some form or fashion in this school district. But the question is, what are we gonna do? If you got a solution, present it. Thank you.
So board, I wanna pause for a moment. It's now ten twenty-two. Um, you all know that I like to end meetings at ten thirty and I'm very consistent about that. Uh, but this is a special night, uh, and we are dealing with a special topic. Uh, so I'm gonna make sure that we're able to have adequate discussion on each one of these items. Uh, just like I wanted to make sure that people were able to get all of their questions asked. So board, I'm asking you all, what do you think is a reasonable time for us to have discussion? Personally, I don't think that's one in the morning. Um, but what I want each one of you to chime in. Um, and then after I hear from each one of you, we're gonna put a motion to the floor. Uh, please, what is a reasonable time for us to have to complete the discussion on each one of these items? Mr. Gonzalez, who am I starting with you?
I would, uh, suggest going to eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. Um, Reckler.
I, um, have previously, previously said that meetings end at ten thirty, so I'm opting for ten thirty. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Smith folds.
I'll go with trustee Gonzalez Hoi at eleven thirty.
Christian.
Yeah, I would say the same at eleven thirty.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I would say the same.
Cole.
Eleven thirty as well.
Trahiel.
Eleven thirty.
All right, can I have a motion to extend to eleven thirty?
Some of.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Gonzalez Hoi, seconded by Smith folds. Gonzalez Hoi, can you start the vote, please?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, no.
Smith falls, yes.
Christian, yes.
Cole, yes.
Trahiel, yes.
Phillips, yes, motion carries. The meeting is extended to eleven thirty. Um, board, we have about an hour. Please be conscious of the time as you talk. Um, whose turn was it next to speak?
It would be mine, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, Cole, go ahead.
Since we have comments, um, I would just like to, uh, request to only speak during this vaccine. I would like to save my comments until this vaccine action item.
You can talk now too, because we're gonna go through each one, so you don't have to skip this.
Okay, um, well, speaking to a lot of teachers, um, and just a lot of staff members in the district, um, I know that a lot of them are very concerned and feel unsafe. Um, just being on campus, I know that the schools, um, specifically on my school site, um, there's been a failure to enforce contact tracing. Um, a lot of teachers feel unsafe. Um, enforcing COVID nineteen safety protocols. For example, um, I remember seeing an outburst of a student having, um, to be sent to the school office or the principal because of the fact that the teacher asked them to put on a mask. Um, and they were very high risk because they were older and very, um, not the healthiest. But I hope that, you know, even despite, um, questions not being asked, that we still have an open mind to those staff members that, you know, are immunocompromised and for the students who might not look, I mean, they might seem healthy but are not very healthy. Um, but that's all I'd like to say for now. Look, I mean, they might seem healthy but are not very healthy. Um, but that's all I'd like to say for now. Thank you.
Trahill?
Thank you, um, for, for I guess, uh, C one. Uh, I would just say that, um. You know, I, I think that it's just, it's best to, to do whatever it takes to keep everyone safe. And, um, just like trustee Co, I also know of cases where. You know, uh, teachers felt unsafe. I mean, most, I mean, I believe, well, I mean, most teachers I know are vaccinated. But, um, even being vaccinated, they still feel unsafe because, um. There's not really, there, I don't think there are statistics yet about students who are vaccinated as of now, so they just, they just don't know. And I feel like it's important to get that information out there and survey students who feel comfortable answering if they are vaccinated. Um, I, I think that being said. It, it is important for, for staff to, to get vaccinated, I believe. Because, I mean, I, it, I just. I mean, e- even with staff being vaccinated, the, the ones that I do know who are vaccinated. Uh, they stay still feeling unsafe, so I feel like that's where you have to get to, um. I guess when it comes to students, because, I mean, staff interact with students every day and not just a few students, but. Hundreds to, to even thousands of students every day. So I feel like it, it's just best that we, we, we do highly consider them, um, mandating a vaccine for. Um, staff. At definitely. Just to keep them safe and then I'll, I'll save the rest of my comments for moving on to the students.
Thank you, Smith Folds. Have you made a decision about moving the table?
I haven't made a decision yet, President Phillips. I'm still processing. Would you motion to table, President Phillips?
I'm about to call the vote, so if you want to table, now would be the time.
Could I put another motion forward?
You can.
I would like to put a motion forward for us when talking about the student vaccination and that would be under C three. I like to put a motion forward that we.
Well, well, you, okay, so the motion needs to be germane to what we're on now, so.
Oh, so we're not at C three yet?
No, we're on C one.
Okay, um, I'll save it to C three then, President Phillips. My motion is for C three.
Okay, you don't have a motion for this one?
No, sir.
Okay, vote Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez, so, sorry, Gonzalez, so yes.
Reckler, yes.
President Phillips, come back to me, please, on this one, on the vote.
Christian?
Christian, yes.
Co, yes.
For he, yes.
Smith Folds?
With the lack of information that I have, I cannot vote yes on this, not knowing the impact to the community. Not knowing the impact to the, I can't vote yes on this, not knowing the impact and not having my questions asked. I need to have the questions asked, answered. I'm sorry, I need to have the questions answered. So Smith Folds, no.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. Moving on us, the next resolution, which is C two vendor vaccine requirement. Can I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
President Phillips, I move for approval.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Gonzalez Hoy, seconded by Christian. Board discussion, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, uh, just like the last one, I hope we can push this one forward. Uh, this one specifically having people coming into our sites, uh, I think it's very critical. Uh, so I hope we vote yes. Thank you.
Reckler?
Just, once again, if, if you can't pull it off, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Reckler, you're making me smile and laugh under my mask, so thank you for the levity. Smith Folds?
I cannot, I cannot make decisions without information. I don't know how many vendors this will impact. I don't know about our city daycare workers. I don't know if they will be allowed to come on campus when they walk to pick up the kids if they're not vaccinated. And if they don't get vaccinated, what's the impact on the city daycare that we have? That impacts our students, our, our, our student, and not just our elementary school students. This is talking about our middle school students too. They have after-school programs that come and pick the kids up and go. I, I can't make decisions without information. You have not told me the impact that this has on specific black and brown vendors and after-school programs. You haven't told me that if one goes away, that you're going to guarantee to put another one in. So if two, after-school tutoring goes away, then you're telling me or not telling me if you're gonna guarantee putting that in by fully vaccinated vendors. I don't. The difficulty in this is I do not have the answers to the questions to ensure that the impact is mitigated for these kids. And for our adults. I just, I don't have, I don't have the information. And I know that I was asked, do, do I table it and wait for the information? At, when will the information come? When, what, the information should be here now before we're talking about it. That's all. We need to have the information.
Christian?
Yes, um, yes, the, uh. Yeah, vendor, yeah, the vendor vaccination, uh, and how much more to say?
Cole?
Yeah, um, regarding the vendor, I mean, action item C two. Um, I feel as though it would be kind of unfair to require employees, volunteers and board members. Um, to get vaccinated and then not have the vendor vaccine requirements. Because it feels like, you know, they're working with the district, they're working with their children specifically. For example, if they're working with after-school programs, um, I know that RISE, you know, they would also be one of the, you know. Organizations that would be required to vac- vaccinate and work with students. And I feel as though, um, having those people be vaccinated also gives us peace of mind, just given, um, the fact that. You know, they might have other, what's it called? Contamination or exposure to COVID from other places and it feels though, you know, if they're going to be exposed to those things. Then they should also be protected, um, just to give peace of mind for both parties involved. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Trahill?
Um, I, I fully agree with trustee Co on this one. Uh, I feel like, uh, vendors should be held to the same standard in terms of vaccines as. Board members and volunteers since they're, well, at least volunteer-wise, interacting with students on a daily basis. Um, so if I, it just, I just feel like it makes the most sense to require vendors, uh, to be vaccinated as well, but I do understand that. Um, information right now, i- it's, it's not fully, it's not fully there yet. It, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. But I, I honestly do think that voting yes on this would, would move, would be start to move forward. In making sure that those questions are taken care of. So I, I, yeah, that, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, please start the roll call, the vote.
Absolutely. Gonzalez, so yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, for all the reasons before, you, you can't give me answers, you can't expect me to trust that you're gonna do what you say you're gonna do. I need answers. Smith Folds, no.
Christian, yes.
Co, yes.
Trahill, yes.
Phillips, yes, motion carries. C three student vaccine requirement, can I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
President Phillips, I move this resolution for approval.
Moved by Gonzalez Hoy, can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Christian. Board discussion.
Sorry, President Phillips, um. Would you mind coming back to me just for a second?
Reckler?
You know, once again, I don't have anything prepared, but, you know, uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done here. Um, everything from, you own vaccinating these children. I am very sure that the majority of them are not vaccinated due to access and. Um, you know, th- this team here owns that. Um, there is a ton of communication that needs to be done. There is a ton of education that needs to be done. Um, students need to be placed properly and carefully and with care. So it, once again, if you, if you don't see it rolling out well. And if you see kids hanging and not being able to be placed well and having smooth transitions, really. Tell, you know, make, make, make it now, make it clear now. Um, that, that we, that there is not confidence to do this well. And I'm expecting, you know, excellent, uh, execution. Um, especially taking care of the students in this district. And, and that's all.
Smith Folds?
I would like to make an amended motion to this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like the motion that we have all students twelve and above get vaccinated. Or they are mandated to do weekly testing, not optional. They are mandated to do weekly testing. That's the motion.
Is there a second for the Smith Folds motion?
President Phillips, can I ask a clarifying question? The motion.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds, would this then make it so that students are not sent to? A virtual option or Vista Land if they were not to get vaccinated? So that's the only thing that would change in the resolution, that practically taking that part off and then adding. Weekly testing instead?
Mandated weekly ta- weekly testing, yes, sir. So this would, for me, what this would do, it would cover both ends. Because I don't think that we're ready to have the impact that this would have on virtual land or virtual. Or Vista Virtual, but what we can, I hope, implement through making good policy. Is that either a child is vaccinated, twelve and above, or that child has to get tested. Weekly, has to get tested weekly. To answer your question, trustee Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Or I'll accept your amendment, but I, I don't know who seconded it, I can't remember.
It's a new motion, so the motion that is on the floor now. Is that students be required to, um, take the vaccine. Or have weekly testing. That's the motion that is on the floor now. If that motion passes, that is the end of the discussion. If that motion fails, we will go to the original motion, which is to. Pass the resolution as written by Dr. Hurst. And the lawyers. The next person in line to speak is Christian.
Can you come back to me?
Cole?
Yeah, so as a student, I felt very neglected, um, regarding this decision of returning back to in-person learning. Um, I know that trustee Smith Folds had mentioned it previously, um, during her first commenting of C one. Um, but I just want to reiterate that I too felt like the district or at least the school site had failed me. But given that I am immunocompromised and live in a very high-risk household. Um, hearing public comment made me a little saddened to hear that. Um, people had an inability to empathize or sympathize with those that may not be or appear as healthy. Um, I think that the idea that just because someone who might not appear as. Um, you know, someone who might not appear as high-risk or someone that is very seemingly athletic and happy. I'm not happy, I'm sorry, healthy, um, you know, they have this natural immunity, um, is a little negligent. Um, and I think that. It's very disappointing sometimes to hear that. Um, just knowing that my household and others, right, that I'm in contact with could get sick. You know, because of this negligence. Um, so I'm very passionate towards getting this vaccine, um, approved. Um, and I know that there are a lot of failures in the district. I felt as though that happened before. And I remember, you know, all my peers and I were all very distraught. Um, we were unsure and very unclear with everything that was going on. Um, but I feel as though this is one thing that we cannot pass up. Um, I think that this is one thing that even despite the uncertainty, we can always. Take a leap forward into faith rather than just turning a blind eye and not committing to it. Um, we always have to make sacrifices and take risks. Um, and so that's all I would like to say from a student's perspective. And from the peers that I've talked to, all of us are in favor, um, so far. As what I've been able to hear from students who actually are being affected by this. Yeah, thank you.
Trahill?
Uh, thank you. Wait, hold on a second. Um, I think, you know, what, what, I, I, I agree, of course, with, um, what trustee Co said. About, um, you know, empathy and I, I, I do wish that, um. You know, other people could understand. Uh, I mean, you know, trustee Co and I are, are the only students here on this board. And really, sadly, some of the only students in this district who actually do have a voice. I mean, I gotta be honest, you know, when, when we did go back to school. Um, students, besides a little survey that they weren't very, m- made very, um, well aware about. Uh, they didn't really have a choice and they kind of just. Yeah, decision was just made. It was mainly just a bunch of adults, uh, talking and, and deciding. And, um. And to be fair, I mean, sometimes adults. Uh, they, they do know what's best, but i- in the end, it's, it's really the, the students themselves who really know. Who really understand themselves and, and our peers. And ju- just, I mean, from my experience in school. Uh, it's, it seems like people don't feel safe. Students, students don't feel safe. Um, I'm not speaking for every student because I, I can't do that myself. I can't speak for every student. But from just what I've heard in class discussions, uh, students don't feel safe. And. It's really because we just don't know if our students are, are vaccinated and we go through the hallways and we see people. Uh, with their masks down and just these policies already here that are not being enforced. These policies are not being enforced. That I haven't, like, very, I mean, usually it's teachers that are enforcing these policies. That's not even. Night, and this is outside of their classroom too. This is during lunch, passing period. I've seen teachers take so much more action, uh, to tell students to put their masks up, to not be. Um, to, you know, to distance themselves, not be in just big groups. And I'd really like to thank all teachers for, for doing that since that's just, that's a lot. And, I mean, being here right now, I just, it really made me see and kind of. Like, see just the difference between what we're doing here and what's actually going on in, in the, in the classroom and outside the classroom. And, uh, personally, the reason why I feel that i- it would be a, a good idea to, to pass either. Um, trustee Smith Folds' motion or amendment or, or this one is just simply because. Mandating a vaccine, whether it be mandating a vaccine or mandatory testing. Those are, are two options that will be enforced, unlike a mask. You can't. I mean, you can tell someone to put their mask up, but they can just put it down. You, you can't tell someone to unvaccinate themselves. I mean, it's just, it, that's something, it's, it's different. It's different vaccines. And, and I, I trust these vaccines. I mean, I, I am vaccinated myself and so is, so are most people in my household. But the thing is, that's just me. I mean, I do, does everyone trust these vaccines? And the answer, and the answer is no, and it's not. And when I say everyone, when I say people who don't trust the vaccine, I don't mean they don't trust the vaccine as in they're getting the wrong information. they're getting the wrong information about this vaccine. I mean, do students really understand how trustworthy this vaccine is? And the research that has been put into it? And what science is saying? So I, I really think that I'm just, I, I want to feel safe. I know other students want to feel safe. And I feel like whether it be trustee Smith Fold's motion or this one, moving forward with mandating vaccines in some form for students, i- is the right choice for safety. And it, I really do hope that this district does continue to or move forward and take student voice more seriously because it has failed to do so. It, it really has, which sucks because this is a school district and we have to go to school. So that's just ridiculous. And I do hope that the work is put in to make sure that these students are not left out and that students will not be forced to go back to online school or they will just not succeed. So I, I am leaning more towards trustee Smith Fold's motion than anything. But anything to get closer to ending this pandemic is what I will go for. Thank you.
Do you want to say something else?
Can I make my comments, huh? I, I,
Oh, yes, you did. You were, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I want to just first thank our student trustees. I think that they are incredibly courageous, ask incredible questions and continue to remind us the importance of student voice. So thank you both. And your words also remind me of the importance of why I, I want to personally make sure this resolution moves forward. I do believe the vaccine is absolutely necessary. It is the strongest mitigation, I believe, to stop the spread of this virus, as I've mentioned earlier and we've heard tonight. I believe right now we are doing testing. And even though I seconded my colleagues that I of course respect, and she is right, that we have to ensure that we agenda is maybe an update so that we can get all the questions answered. I won't vote on, I won't vote on the amendment. And I wa- I want you to know, trustee Smith Folds, why? Because I, 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 I believe now that I've had a few minutes to think about it and after hearing us through trustees, that, that's almost what we're already doing, right? Vaccine or get tested. I mean, that's practically what we're already doing without an actual mandate. I believe that we need to bring something stronger to our schools. And that a man, a mandate in our schools will then spread to our community. I think that the vaccine will grow and we'll be able to educate our community on the truths behind it. Tonight, I even learned even more myself by hearing from our health officer. So I do believe that we have to pass the resolution as is. But we have to ensure that the pathway that we do offer to those who will not get vaccinated is the best pathway we can give. So Dr. Hurst, I do believe that we have to continue to do everything we can to strengthen our virtual option. If that's the direction that we head in. Thank you.
President Phillips, point of order?
Yes, ma'am. What is your point of order?
I would like to actually give my discussion on my motion. I just motioned. I didn't give any discussion to it or make any comment about it. I just put the motion forward. May I make a comment about my motion, please?
Yes, ma'am. You're right.
I think the reason why I want to have students be vaccinated or tested is because, colleagues, you're right, we are doing testing, but we're not doing it accurately. We're not doing it correctly. We're not doing it to its fidelity. But I think because we had that option of or in there, and if we mandate that the students are vaccinated and if they're not vaccinated, they have to be tested. They have to be tested. I think that gives a little bit of meat to it, like you were saying, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, a little bit of bite to it. And I think that we also can, we can, I just don't think that we're at the stage to where we can say that we have something ready for the group of kids who are not, who are going to be impacted if they are not vaccinated. There is a group, whether it's a big group or a small group, there is a group of kids who will be impacted by this, and I don't think that we're ready. I think that we could come back to it, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, even if you wanted to put a time limit on this and see have students have to be vaccinated or students have to be tested. And then we get the updates about how many students are being tested. We just don't have any answers. We don't even know of the students who have been tested positive. We don't know how many of those students are vaccinated or not vaccinated. We don't have any answers. We haven't asked students. The student trustees are telling us that they haven't been consulted about this. So does it give, I'm looking for something that gives us a little room to talk and have the conversation and to get the questions answered, to send the surveys to families, to say to parents and students, if you're not, are you willing to get vaccinated? Yes or no? If you're not willing to get vaccinated or do you understand that you will have to be tested weekly? Yes or no? If you do not, if you do not fall in line with that testing, then your only option in this district would be, these are the straight conversations that I'm trying to have with the entire community. But I think that we will have unintended consequences if we say tonight, on this one particular about students, if we say you have to get vaccinated or you're going to virtual school. I don't think that we're prepared to have that ripple effect. I think what we can prepare for is to say you are either to be vaccinated or you have to consent to weekly testing. And I know that testing just catches it if you have it, but at least we can catch it if we have it. If everybody's vaccinated and we catch it on sight, we catch it, then we have, we have at least some sort of data that we can start collecting about if the mitigation factors are working, if it's working. And Mr. Booker has told us that we're going to stay masked up. He has told us that we're going to stay social distancing. He has told, but now let's see if the testing actually works. It was too big before. We know that it didn't work. It was too, we were unable to handle the amount of testing that we have. What does this look like if we do it this way? Does it cut down on those numbers to where we can actually have, we can actually have expectations that we can meet? But we have to ask the question. We have to figure those fifteen thousand students, how many even fall into this category? We, we're making decisions without information. So I'm asking us not to make binding decisions without information. Let's, for this one, let's really consider having a way to where we can have some room to move inside of this while still protecting our teachers, while still protecting our other students, while still protecting our staff, while still maintaining our families in the district, while still not overloading virtual school, who is already still trying to get its foot on the ground. Let's have this for students. You get vaccinated, twelve and above, or you submit to weekly testing. You submit to weekly testing. I'm asking colleagues to think about this. And in the interim, if we pass this, then we start doing the work of talking to the students and the families. We start doing the work of keeping the mitigation factors and we start doing the work of collecting the data of what happens to those fifteen thousands now that we have the number, now that we have the information. That's it, President Phillips.
Thank you. In May, I voted to follow local, state, and federal guidelines.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, President Phillips. I got skipped in this.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, if I may. And you can choose to answer it or not, but can we get a read from either district staff or the health officer as to whether mandating the testing for kids is, would be something that is legal and, and we could do?
I'm going to comment on that if you don't mind. Okay. In May, I voted to follow local, state, and federal guidelines related to COVID. I did that because I firmly believe that in times like these, elected officials should follow the official guidance of public health professionals. I am not a public health professional. And I believe that when I make decisions that affect the public, that I need to take a backseat and that I need to follow. I need to follow because I have an obligation to the public, the same obligation that everyone here today has. Now, I will tell you very matter-of-factly why I voted to follow local, state, and federal guidelines. It's because I believe in science. It's because I trust science. It's because I am an education leader and I want the children in this district to trust science as well. And right now, all we have to answer your question, Mr. Christian, is science. The Bible tells us not to lean on our own understanding. And in order to not lean on your understanding, you have to have some humility. And you have to have enough humility to follow when it's time to follow. And even the strongest, best leaders know that sometimes you have to follow. And today, we need to follow the official guidance of the Contra Costa Health Service. We need to follow the official guidance of Dr. Fontanano because Dr. Fontanano is our public health officer. Because Dr. Fontanano has the responsibility of keeping this county safe. Yes, I can make different motions. But I know my place. And in this instance, my place is to follow the public health experts. Dr. Fontanano says in his guidance to the entire county, Contra Costa Health Services and I, as Contra Costa County's health officer, recommend that all eligible students aged twelve and older get vaccinated against COVID-19 at their soonest opportunity. We are not gods. We don't have the right to play with people's lives. And we don't have the right to make decisions that we personally are not qualified to make. Trustee Reckler, you asked a question around mandating testing. Guidance that came out from the CDC in 2019 says, and I will read this to you, this is a quote, "If a school is implementing a testing strategy, testing should be offered on a voluntary basis. It is unethical and illegal to test someone who does not want to be tested, including students whose parents or guardians do not want them to be tested," end quote. So not only is this motion almost identical to what we're doing right now, which is what Gonzalez-Hoy said earlier, so it's really not a change. The CDC says we will be taking in action that is unethical and illegal. I trust my superintendent. He took his time. He investigated this. And when people pushed, he said, "I still have investigation to do." He created resolutions that were vetted by the lawyers. And here today, we have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to show folks what elected officials should do in times of public health crisis. We don't grandstand. We don't do Donald Trump. We don't, we follow scientists in West Contra Costa County. I am not voting for this motion. I am voting for the original resolution. And I ask folks on this floor to not listen to me but to listen to the public health officials who are charged with our protection. I know when I'm out of my lane. I know when I'm out of my place. And I know when I need to follow. And today, I'm following science. I am following my public health officer. And I ask you all to do the same. Vote this motion down and vote for the resolution that is in line with the official guidance from our public health officer. Everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy, please start the roll call.
Gonzalez-Hoy, no.
Reckler, no.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, no.
Kono.
Trujillo?
Trujillo, can I abstain?
Fair enough. Phillips, no. Motion fails. We're on to the original motion. Gonzalez-Hoy?
Gonzalez-Hoy, yes.
Reckler, yes.
I'm sorry, President Phillips. Are we discussing or we're just voting?
If you have discussion, we will discuss.
I have discussion.
So I'm going to go in order, though, ma'am. So Gonzalez-Hoy will begin.
Thank you. I don't have anything further to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing further either.
I think the thing that I have to say is I will never follow blindly. Questions deserve to be answered. Questions deserve to be answered. Discussions deserve to be had. Conversations with all stakeholders must be heard. Voices matter when you're making these type of decisions. Not one survey, not one student asked, not one parent surveyed, not one data point, not one question able to be answered to fidelity about the impact, not one about the impact. So you're right. You are absolutely right that sometimes you have to fall back and follow. And sometimes you have to stand on what you consider to be your integrity, whether it's this topic that you agree with or a topic that you don't agree with. Questions deserve to be answered. Conversations deserve to be had. Voices deserve to be at the table. Not about somebody without somebody. Show me the data. Show me the surveys. Show me the impact that it has. What, show me the number of parents that you talk to. Show me the information. Show me the information and then you can have the vote. But the, 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 we're here to serve. And I serve by asking questions and listening to those answers. And from those answers, making informed decisions and setting policy that can be implemented. I can't go by things that just have to be dictated. Things have to be able to be implemented. Conversations have to be had. Investment has to be made in the community. The community has to know that their voices were heard, that they were even asked about this. So then that policy can be shaped from the answers and the people that have asked, have been asked the question. You can have the answers and you can shape the policy that you know will be implemented at these levels. Nobody's trying to be God. I'm trying to be a public servant. That's it. I'm trying to ask questions that people need to have so they can make informed decisions. I'm trying to honor student voice by asking students what you think. That's all. There is no grandstanding. There's just asking questions. There's just trying to serve the community. There's just trying to do it the best way. And the best way is by having answers to questions. The best way is forming implementable policy. The best way is providing the resources and the supports that are going to be needed. The best way is knowing the impact that it's going to have. Asking those future questions, what happens if? And then being able to have those answers to form great policy, to form great implementable. To form great implementable policy that represents the district that we serve as a whole. That's all I'm asking. That's the reason that I'm going to vote no. Because the work wasn't done. You didn't ask. You didn't have conversations. You didn't do surveys. You didn't bring back plans. You didn't bring back answers to the questions that we sit and we asked you on the dais. That's the reason. This ain't no shade towards you, Dr. Hurst. This is me standing in my integrity and what I was elected to do, which is ask questions. And then from the answers, form the policy that I think would be able to be implemented centering the health, safety, and welfare and the success of students. That's what this is. So that my first no, my second no, my third no, it's all because people were not asked. I'm not anti or pro anything. It's self-people's voice. That's what I'm pro. I'm pro people's voice. That's it. Thank you.
Christian?
Uh, I don't have anything further to say.
Cole?
Yeah, um, while I understand, um, Ms. Smith Folds' concerns, I understand and I under, I can see, um, where she's coming from. Um, I think that even though I might not agree with, you know, taking a leap, I do believe again how you were saying to believe in science and believe in if, you know, our public health officer, Dr. Forne, uh, I'm sorry, Forne Taro? Fornataro, I'm sorry. Um, Dr. Fornataro, um, advises us to do this. Um, I would vote on that just because I would like to follow science and believe in it. Um, you know, I might not have done extensive research as some of the public comment, um, commenters who did work in like, um, you know, COVID hospitals and nurses and other things. Um, but just understanding that, you know, our, the state, I mean, even this district, I understand that, um, not this district, I'm sorry, Contra Costa Health Services, um, we're now mandating, um, that if we do go outdoors, right, we have to bring our vaccination cards. Um, I don't know if they did some sort of, you know, survey or anything like that. Um, but taking that risk, I think, gave me peace of mind to know that if I'm going out, I will be safe, knowing that other people that are going to these public spaces are vaccinated. Um, even despite the backlash that I see in comments of, you know, people saying that, you know, they're taking where their freedom or other things. It gives me peace of mind that even though there was this risk in this backlash of, you know, people protesting against it, we were still, I mean, we still managed to take this leap of faith and listen to science and do things that were in the best interest for public health. Um, and to take one step forward to ending this pandemic, right? Um, but like I had said before, right, um, I'm very, again, I'm not, I'm sorry, not against. I'm for this, um, action item. So that's all I'd like to say. I want to reiterate that. But yeah, thank you.
Trujillo?
Um, as soon as I want to say, um, first is that I, I, I do trust science and I, I do trust this vaccine. And I think that thi, this does need to pass in, in some form. I'm just not sure if this is the right form because, you know, coming into this meeting, I was like, I was thinking, I'm, I'm going to vote yes for this. I want a vaccine mandate. But that's the thing, I want a vaccine mandate. And, I mean, in the end, you know, based on just what we've heard, y- yes, I, I think that a, a vaccine mandate is necessary. I, I think that, um, definitely there, there doesn't need to be a vaccine mandate. But there's so much other stuff that I just didn't know about, about what would happen to the students who, who didn't want to get vaccinated or who have other obligations or, um, you know, I heard online school and I, I instantly just, I mean, I understand that that works for some people, but as someone who was in online school, I, I did not do well the, the second half. I, you know, I'm usually a, a, like, you know, in ter, in terms of As and Bs and stuff, I mean, I, I usually do fine if we use that system, which that's something, but, uh, you know, with online school, it kind of just flipped it upside down. I didn't have the resources necessary to, to be able to, to do my best. And even going back now in person, I don't have the right resources. I, there's still teacher vacancies and there's still issues that are not, are, are, are still, there's still issues. I mean, not enough custodial staff, not enough security. And students never seem to get a say in any of it. It's, it's, I'm kind of tired of it and I, I don't feel like, I mean, my vote, I don't really, I, I think of my vote as, you know, I, my vote, student trustee votes are just advisory and they don't actually, clarify, they just don't actually go towards the final vote. And, um, in the end, I still feel like, I still feel like it does. I mean, I, I don't know why. I mean, because this is just me thinking that, you know, i- in different terms than I, I normally do, my day-to-day life. This is, these are like decisions that, um, these is, I, I don't even know how to put into words. I mean, these are just things I just don't think about. I just didn't think about students that have to do online school. Um, what about teachers who can't get vaccinated? Well, it's just, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm very, I'm very split on this and not, I, I never thought I would be. I, I didn't think, I, I do trust science. I trust this vaccine. And as important as, as this is, I, I just feel like there, there's so much that hasn't been, hasn't been answered. And, I mean, in the end, it needs to happen. But I really hope that, um, we push forward in, in learning more. And I want to come back to this. And I think we need to come back to this, no matter what happens tonight. We need to come back to this. I don't want us to just vote for it and then just say, okay. Yes, we can vote for it. We can vote yes for it. But in the end, we still need to do surveying. We still need to find out what people want. Because this is what science is saying and, and I'll always agree with science over, you know, just someone who doesn't, who isn't informed. But when it comes to things like what will we do with those students who aren't vaccinated or teachers? That's where I, I'm kind of split. That's where I feel like we need to do more research on. Not necessarily the safety of this vaccine, because that, that's already been done. So, uh, if I vote yes on this, I, I, there's more that needs to be done, not with this vaccine, but with everything else, which there's a lot of, and I just was not made aware about. And I, I want students to, to have a say in this one, unlike going back to, to in-person school. Because I, we didn't have much of a say in it at all. That's all I have to say.
I just received a message that says, "I will make it my personal mission for you to be removed from this board." "You should never have children's futures in your hands." That's the message I received after I made my last comment. The world right now is upside down. I can't tell the future and nobody on this board can tell the future. All we can do is do what we believe is right with the best information that we have. And the guidance from our public health officer is the best information that we have. So I don't know what's coming my way. But I do know, and I do believe that when history judges this board, history will say that we were right. And history will say that we had the courage to stand. That's what I believe. Now, for anyone who thinks I'm playing with children's, I have children in this district. I am a district parent. My vaccine card is in my wallet. I'm not doing or voting for anything that I wouldn't have my own children do or that I would not do myself. I'm not afraid. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, please start the vote.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler, yes.
I don't want anybody making decisions about me without me. Smith Folds, no.
Christian, yes.
Kono, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes. Motion carries. We will now go to item E, comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items. We have enough time for us to do about a minute and a half of piece. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank everybody, staff, my colleagues, everybody here. Uh, these decisions are never easy, but I, I agree. I think that we made the right choice tonight, even through the difficulties. Um, I am very thankful that we moved these forward and that we're moving in the right direction, in my opinion. I just wanted to address trustee Trujillo. I believe that yours and trustee Coes are the most important votes up here. Your voice is absolutely critical. Uh, and tonight, you remind me about the courage from young people. So don't ever think that your vote, even though technically doesn't count, it doesn't, because I think that all of us pay attention to your voice and, and it is absolutely important. Um, I, I did want to ask that we just get constant updates on the vaccine mandate on all levels, um, including, uh, that we get through our Friday memos, responses to some of the questions that we're not able to get responses tonight. And, and especially trustee, uh, Smith Folds' questions. Um, Dr. Hurst, if that's possible. Um, and, and I do want to request that, um, uh, as soon as possible, we can have the conversation about standing reports as well. Thank you.
So I too want to thank everybody involved. And I want to thank the board. And there was a lot of bravery shown tonight. And we are always trailblazing here in this district. Never a dull moment. Uh, so, so thank you. Uh, yeah, well, it's always interesting up here. I would, I'd like to jump back to last week. And first, I want to apologize to the community for last, uh, last week's board meeting. And I want to apologize because I should have called a recess and I didn't because I didn't think about it. And I've been feeling poorly about that ever since. And so I wanted to come forward and apologize for not calling a recess so that we could regroup in a, in a tough moment. Um, I hope to never have that experience again, but if I do, I will be calling for a recess. I'd also like to thank everybody who, uh, organized the Sos, the Soskin, um, celebration last week. It was really beautiful and I want to thank the communications department. And I want to thank everybody who spoke and the board members who spoke. It was really touching and I was so happy to be there and it was just such a great moment. And so I wanted to say thank you. And, um, as far as upcoming items for the next board meeting, once again, a very thin agenda focusing only on our operational issues and all the follow-up, because this will need to be added as a topic of interest. I also had a number of questions, uh, which I will send in and either through Friday memo or through these updates through the board. Uh, I would like to get answers on them. And with that, I'm done for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to make something abundantly clear. You don't know if I'm for or against anything because I'm here for the community voice. The problem I have, I'm not against anything, but the way that this was done tonight. I'm against the fact that we have no data. I'm against the fact that there's no questions answered. I'm against the fact that we didn't do any surveys. I'm against the fact that not one student was asked. I'm against the fact that not one parent was asked. I'm against the fact that we still don't know SB two seventy-seven, how many kids did it impact? I'm against the fact that we don't know what the impact will be on virtual school. I'm against the, I'm against the fact that we didn't ask. We didn't ask. We just told. We just told. We did not ask people. That's the only thing I'm standing here saying. For better or for worse, you got to ask people. You have to have conversation. You got to be invested in what people have to say about the decisions that you're making when you're sitting on this dais. And the decisions that we make is we make policy. And the policy has to be implementable and the policy has to be good and the policy has to work. We have to ask people. We just heard tonight that mitigation things will be reduced. But we need to have concrete things in writing. We need to make sure that we know what that means. Because it affects people. It has impact on people. We need to talk. We need to have conversations to completion. And we need to ask. That's what I'm here. I'm here to ask the questions, to serve at the will of the people. If I want history to judge this board on anything, I want it to judge it on the fact that we need to get back to asking. So I want to bring standing reports back. Let's talk about it. Let's hear from people. I want to bring back public comment again so we can get it right. Let's keep bringing it back until we get it right. That's humility. You bring it back in yourself and you course correct until you can get it right. I want to bring back virtual school as its own item. Talk about it. How can we get it right? What resources and supports do we need to get it right? And we need to have that conversation now more than anything else because of what just passed today, the policy that just passed today. We have to provide more resources and more support because of what passed today. I do want to talk about dress code. I do want to talk about the adult school, more so now because of what we did today. We have to have these conversations. We need to talk about what was brought to us last week or the last board meeting about period poverty. Administration poverty, it needs to be something we discuss at this board level. Preschool aides, we need to talk about it. We need to provide resources and make some real decisions around how we're going to help with the TK programs and the preschool programs that we have in our district that are struggling. We need to talk about the transitional program. We have a transitional program in the district that doesn't feel like they're included. They don't feel like they have a voice. We need to talk about all the marginalized groups that feel like they don't have a voice. And we do that from the dais by inviting people to the table. We do that by having open conversations. We do that by bringing back the community voice. You want to make these big decisions? Make them with the people that have to implement them. Make them with the people that it impacts. Let's make a community school board tool. We're actually listening to what people have to say. And that comes from having timely meetings and noticing people in time. I'm not against anything but the fact of the way it was done. We got to do it better. We have to do it better. Thank you.
Christian?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank, um, my colleagues tonight, the trustees and, and the student trustees. Your, your voice is very important. All of our student voices are very important. And so continue to express yourself and continue to, to say what's on your mind. And don't be afraid. You did good tonight. Thank you. And to the staff and all those who work, uh, diligently and hard. And like I said earlier, you know, we're in a crazy time of a pandemic. This thing is real and it's, and it's not easing up. It's like somebody stepping on the gas pedal and the car is moving. This pandemic is moving. And, and my question is, what is our solution to deal with it? So we, we, we got to be wise in the things we do. And, and make sure we do, stay on top of things and just, and stay the course. Um, we have a lot to do. We have a lot to, um, you know, keep things, you know, keep the district moving. So, so, so tonight, I just wanted to say, you know, thank, thank everybody because, you know, these are some hard decisions to make. And sitting up here on the dais, it is hard. And that stuff runs through your mind, you begin to, you, you, you got to internal, you ask yourself, man, you, you, you got to internal, you ask yourself, man, should I do? But we have to, you know, listen and lay it all out. So, so I just wanted to say, you know, you know, we still got to keep moving and doing the best we can to make, make our district a better district. Thank you.
Yeah, so I would like to start off by saying again, to reiterate, thank you to everyone. Um, staff members for staying, um, security guards are always very kind to me. Um, they're the first people I see, so I feel like they're not as appreciated. So I'd like to say thank you to them. Um, but secondly, I would also like to say thank you to everyone, um, the public and people on the board, especially Mr. Phillips, um, for opening up about your family. Um, I know that it can be very hard to talk about, you know, family and stuff like that. I, I felt like I was vulnerable too, but, um, my condolences go out to the people who have also lost, um, people due to COVID. Um, that struck me when a lot of people were talking about it in public comment. Um, but I'm very happy with our decision today. Um, I think that even though, you know, this district isn't perfect, we do have new people on the board, Superintendent Hurst. I definitely appreciate Dr. Hurst's ability and outreach to students. Um, hopefully, even though, you know, we did take a leap in the dark and although some people might not agree, um, I'm hoping that with new people in charge and just, you know, new student trustees and other people, um, we're able to address things differently and approach things in a different manner. Um, but yeah, again, thank you for everything to everyone. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I mean, thank, thank you to everyone, teachers, custodians, uh, uh, security especially. Um, I, I just, I feel, I don't know, I, I personally just, the decision I made, I, I wouldn't say I'm, I'm satisfied, but satisfied with it because I, I just don't really know what else I could have done. I wish there was, if I, if I knew more, I feel like I, I would have been, um, able to come to a better conclusion for my decision. But, um, I feel like I want to maybe address also, uh, the last board meeting. I had a lot of people come up to me and tell me like, oh, that they were sorry for what I, I had to deal with. Even in today's meeting, I, I had some people or had some people in public comment echo that. And I just, I just tell them it's just, it's just a part of the job, I guess, but, um, it, it shouldn't be though. It, it really shouldn't be. I mean, I, I'm grateful that, that people were able to, to open up about, you know, their personal family and feelings and, and things. But, but at the same time, I, I also wish that, um, you know, students had more an opportunity to open up about, about their issues as well. And I mean, I'm only, I'm only one student. And I, I, I personally felt like, uh, I feel like no student should have to deal with, with that. You know, this, this board should not be, uh, you know, bullying each other. I mean, most people here are grown adults and that's, that's very childish, more childish than, than children act sometimes. For, um, you guys to be doing that kind of thing, especially to, to trustee Co or I, I think that's just pretty immature. I, I wouldn't do the same because ageism and I don't have, I don't feel like I have the, well, one, the authority or two, I, I just think it's wrong to, um, act that way towards anyone. So I just would appreciate if people were just nicer to each other and respected each other's thoughts and, and took other people's voices into account, especially students. Because like I said, you know, I always hear a student voice is valuable, but like, I don't see that. I hear it, I don't see it. And I, I need to see that more. I, I really, I still don't get informed on anything. I still don't know what's going on. And this is already my, my fourth meeting in, I still don't know. And I wish I did and I wish all students knew. I wish this district was just more transparent with students because they, they're not at all. I go in the class and people, people don't know, know what's up, not even in school. Not even on a school basis, a school site level, students don't know what's happening. I mean, I could go on and on about things just based on school site. I'm sure every school has, it has issues, but it starts here. It starts here. If we set the, the tone and the example for how things should be done, then it will go down from here. And even better so, if people were aware of things happening here. And if we can just get to things that are happening here, correct and right. And, uh, once again, thank you to, to everyone who, um, said something. Um, I don't, you know, we all have different thoughts and opinions. And I, I really do hope that we, we do better to listen to, to our students. Because why not? We're, we're a school district. This is, I mean, we have to go here. It's mandatory. Why not take the time to actually listen to students and inform them on what's going on? Thank you.
It's eleven thirty-two. The meeting is supposed to end at eleven thirty. I just want to say very quickly, thank you to Dr. Farnatano for having the courage to issue guidance for the entire county. I hope folks around the state of California follow your lead. Because when health officers don't do that, school districts end up with a hodgepodge of policies. So you did right. Thank you very much for answering the call for bold leadership. Also want to thank our supervisor, John Joya, who was instrumental, uh, in helping us actually get guidance. I'd also like to point out that we have three trustees who have been advocating, uh, for this. Uh, I want to point out trustee, uh, Christian, uh, trustee Reckler and trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Um, this is an important issue, uh, and you made it yours. And because you made it yours, we voted on it tonight and passed it. So thank you so much. Student trustees, thank you as well. Dr. Hurst, thank you for taking the time to investigate this and bring us a sound resolution. This would not have happened without you. That said, I want to wish everyone a good night. God bless you. Meeting adjourned.